So, um, thank you all. Hope you had a good lunch. Uh, we are back currently with Commissioner Burt, Commissioner Manus, Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Ringham, and Commissioner Clissis Village, and Commissioner Taylor has just joined the group. So, um, we are on item number three, and I will, even though it just said it, I'll remind Commissioners, we are being recorded through this. So you might want to take a pause before you say something. Okay, so we are on, uh, item number three A, which is the draft annual compliance requirements. Yeah, so I'm going to turn this over to Julia so she can explain what it, I use the word finally, looks like.
So Commissioners, we looked at these pretty extensively at the last meeting. There were a lot of very specific changes made to these. You'll remember that these are the documentation for, um, the, a very specific indicator in the new performance framework, which is three B. Um, so there were changes made to the instruction page, that's three A. There were changes made to, uh, you talked about a variety of options under three B. Three B is the end result of that discussion. And then three C is have, a lot of the conversation went around, do the schools certify annually that they know what these requirements are? So we did a draft certification for the schools. Um, and I'll just highlight one thing in three C for you, which is a school says, "To the best of our knowledge, we are complying, except as follows." And then if they're working to meet certain criteria, they're working to fix something, because, you know, we talk about often, no, no school is perfect. We're always working on what we're doing. So they can indicate what they're working on and that they're doing it. So it's not intended to be a gotcha, um, but it is intended to have them look at that annually. It is required that they provide their draft board minutes. We're not going to wait two months to get, you know, the final board minutes, but the draft board minutes. So that will go out to the schools every day. So the three documents, the instruction page, the CSD assessment page, and then that certification. And then finally, every year, I, I don't know that there's a good example this year, but let, let's say one of the pieces of legislation that, that just went up to the governor this year would require a slight change to this form. You're going to look at it annually, not to throw out the form and start again, but to say, "Oh, we need to add this, or we need to take this one out." So there may or may not be anything to change on this form before July 1, but we'll know that soon.
The only thing I was going to ask is if there's any way to just make these three separate documents, just one.
Yes. Before tomorrow, we'll make them one.
Yeah. And my only question is, I know we talked about, uh, at the beginning of the year, these were doing the assurance that we did, but is there anywhere where we're going, where there's an acknowledgement by the Governance Council at the end of the year, so that they acknowledge, like maybe this, um, that second scoring sheet? So they've also had that discussion of where they fell short and it didn't happen? That's, um, and I'm just, you know,
Isn't that the actual rating?
Talking out loud. But they, but they, but that, the rating is done, not, not, not all of it's done by them, by the, by the Governance Council.
Yeah, none of it is.
Right.
I guess the way I see it is, they're saying they're going to be compliant and all this stuff right beginning of the year. Then at the end of the, or whenever site visits happen, or whenever they finish their final reports, that's what three B,
Right.
I think, and that explanation and monitoring conducted, if a school is given a rating of partially compliant or out of compliance, I think that's where,
Right.
you would get, and then the school would have their, their back and forth with CSD, right? And be able to have that, "No, we were in compliance because of, look at, you know, this," or during their annual report time.
And I get that piece, but that piece is more with the head administrator and CSD in terms of that back and forth. That back and forth doesn't happen with, necessarily with the board. The first, that first, that assurance letter comes with the note, with the minutes. So that's the only thing, um, to me, it might be helpful to,
They would just need to,
to evidence that they had a discussion at the board meeting about the site visit,
Or their annual report.
Their annual report, whichever.
That schools are required to review their annual.
So that we've got, yes, this is what we were going to do, and yes, they had a discussion about, whether, you know, whether they did it all or not, and, and any next steps. It's not asking a lot. It's just, you know, can we get something in, I don't know when, June? I don't, I don't know if June is too, because they'd have the site, June's too early for the annual report. It's not for their site visit, but it would be for this whole piece. So it's almost like, and that's where I struggle, because they're going to be sending this, the assurance from last year, at the same time they're sending the assurance for, it could be the same board meeting.
That's, well, I, I,
Could be. It's, I'm, I think I'm overthinking it.
Yeah, that's what I think too. No, I, because I do think if, like, if you're thinking about, they have to do this before September 1 every year.
Yeah.
And so there, if, I, I don't know, I would say if we're going to require minutes that they reviewed their annual report, that may be separate than this. Like, I still think this is good how it is.
Yeah.
But I do think you're right, like, when they would be reviewing their last year's results would be the same time in which they're doing,
Right.
their report again. So I think it's still like, the annual assurance covers, basically, because basically, they're going to have to reflect on their last year, right? To say, "Yeah, we're in compliance here, we're not in compliance here." We're in, like, if they do that annually, I think it covers it.
One B says that, or, one B, at a public meeting, they reviewed the compliance requirements and the most recent annual review voted, and any identified areas of concern. I don't, um, on document three C, it's the compliance certification, that the top one B.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, I was just, I was digging into the, they're, they're going to overlap, and it doesn't make any sense. Yeah. I take it. Yeah. Everyone's good with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow. We're on to now, item number four, which is review and discussion of clarifications of the academic performance framework. And the record needs to also reflect that, uh, Commissioner Brower and Commissioner, really, sorry, are, are back, are here. Thank you. I had a brain fart. Yep. So number four, let me open it up. So, as, um, negotiations were actually beginning, there were some questions surrounding the mission-specific goals. And how many, what, do the goals have to, does the mission-specific goal have to cover the whole school? And what's the participation in it? And, um, Julia, um, Beck and myself had a couple of conversations about this, and we're in agreement that this really made, that it's the mission of the school. So every student in the school should be part of that mission-specific goal, should be reflected in that mission-specific goal, because that school should be living and breathing the mission of the school. So that it, it can look different, and it can be parsed out in that goal. If it's a large school that covers K-12, what you're going to see in the K-3 group is going to be drastically different than the 10, 12 group. So that there can be different, it can be differentiated within the goal, that this is what you're going to see in our kindergarteners to third grade, this is what you're going to see in our middle school. But it covers the entire school, because it is the mission of the school that's being reflected in this goal. And there was some, um, if a school chooses to have a second goal, that second goal could be to just a specific or several grade levels. You know, we want to track our seniors with this in, in particular. It is important to our school, and it is embodied within our mission, but it's not the whole mission. A school can have a second goal that only covers a smaller portion, number, of participants in the school. So, we made, um, we made that clarification in, uh, footnotes. So we, Well, that's why they do that, so that you don't stay in the building. Seriously. We used to have, yeah, we used to have staff complain to us, "I can't stay in here with that going on."
Here and see if there's real flame?
Oh. Ring in my phone.
I know, Patty, you have a, you have a mutiny happening.
You're not listening.
You have a good time in the last today?
Hey. No, I don't, I do. We're on number four.
Let me explain a few things.
Yeah.
All right, let me just show you where the two footnotes are. There's one, there's a second point as well. There's just another clarification. It is the worst microphone. Um, there's a,
Here, let me move on.
Thank you, I think she fixed it. Thank you, Missy. The second clarification is that if you choose the alternative measure, where you are going with vistas and a second assessment, that it's the same students. So you might assess your whole school, but if it's only 11th graders, then it's only 11, it's whatever it is by the state, it's the same students. So the other way felt, um, more onerous and made it less likely the schools would choose it. Then the last thing I'm going to say is that in working with the schools that are going to negotiate, we've already emailed out these clarifications, and actually already got a thank you for the clarification. So the schools that are most effective, affected, already know about that. And actually, it came in response to questions they raised, so that was good. The footnotes are on number, on page nine, and on page 13. And the only suggestion, uh, the PDF, because the Word document just gets mess, yeah, yes. Or, I'm sorry, the, yes, 4.1. And 13 are the two footnotes. Uh, the only other thing I suggest, and I'll put it in the motion tomorrow, is that CSD be authorized to go, um, make sure that everything's still consistent, because like footnote, referring back to footnote four, I tried to make sure that was correct, but, um, I think they should double-check it. We felt like this was clarification and not a, and not a substantive change of, of the intent. But it was a needed clarification, so we, it is on the agenda to approve it tomorrow, uh, and also because the schools are going to go to contract negotiation.
Any questions? Okay. We are on to item number, we're on to item number five, second discussion of notice of intent feedback form and FAQs. Sorry. So we've had discussions about, about the NOI. And, um, based on the input from the Policy Committee, the second, is it, I don't have it open, because I'm trying to open it. Is it the, five B? Came out as a result of that.
One is on five A or five B?
Five A is just the NOI, correct? Five B is the,
Five, five, I'll just clarify really quickly. Five A, there's a few legal annotations, it's just a frequently asked question document. There weren't any changes to that.
Right. And it is that feedback from the reviewer that, um, the, this is the recommendations from the Policy Committee of what, of how that feedback should happen. And we settled on a place last month, that this was supposed to just purely be, more informational for the applicant, to help them move towards a better application, than to be viewed as a punitive, and, and you're going to be marked down for it. But this is, let us, let us offer you some feedback to show you whether this is strong enough, this is sufficient enough, and offer some comments to that. So, um, I had a conversation yesterday with Karina and Missy, and Missy had brought up, and Missy, tell me what number it is again? Wait, oh, no, I was, we, I thought, sorry. I thought we just highlighted the word in the document.
Karina highlighted it in the, in the CSD one. Do you want me to share that on the screen?
I thought it was being highlighted. Okay.
Didn't replace what was there. There is a five C document that says CSD comments.
No, so that's, sorry.
Oh, then I'm missing a few.
Then I'm, yeah. Someone misunderstood, because, uh, we were always supposed to highlight the two spots where Missy wanted us to look at a word, and the one word was capacity, that she wanted us to look at.
Highlight.
Okay. Right. So, Missy brought up the concern that a, an independent reviewer, or whoever's going to be reviewing it, whether at this point in time, they could truly judge capacity and give feedback to a person that, "We don't think you have capacity at this moment in time." That is there another word that we could nuance there? Yeah, they're kind of all,
There's nothing really in the NOI that would indicate.
Capacity, see, that's where we struggle, because the NOI isn't detailed enough to really show capacity. You're not asking enough out of that to say, "Wow, this is, these people have all the skills necessary to do this." So that's why that word capacity, I think everyone would probably say yes, because they wouldn't want to say no. You know? So that's, that's where the concern is, that this is only feedback based on that really very general NOI. So that, uh, if we're asking, the founders have the capacity to lead and then guide the effort. I don't know whether, I'm almost of a mind to say, do we just leave that piece out and leave the diversity piece in? And we, we need clarification on the diversity. Because we talked about that, because, um, when Karina asked me, "What do you mean by diversity?" I think in this particular setting, we're talking about experiences.
So, do we say founders are involved and willing to help guide the effort?
That's,
How can you determine if they're involved?
Of the NOI. Yeah. See, that's the, that's the struggle, that, um, without changing at this point in time what's asked in the NOI, you're, you're just really, they're filling out a general form and saying this is, they're introducing ourselves, themselves to us, more than anything else. So it's really difficult, you can't judge capacity. Commissioner Korea?
I was, and we're using our mics now, right? Okay, so I would say strike the bullet, founders have the capacity, it's not necessary, because we have no way of knowing. You know, but I do like the sentence underneath, is there adequate diversity?
Yeah.
And we did, Well, because, like you said, it's the, it's a letter of intent. They're going to realize, three or four months from now, you know what? We are so not ready. Or they're going to say, "Hey, let's full-speed ahead."
Commissioner Burt, and then Commissioner Beck.
I guess, I mean, it could be, no, it's fine.
Commissioner Beck?
Why, I, I, why would we say adequate diversity of skills? Why wouldn't we say, um, adequate background and experience? Because that's really what you're looking at, because diversity could be,
Yeah.
um, thought of in all different kinds of contexts.
That's why we added, because, hey, I was driving. Um, that's why we added skills to it, so that there wasn't any question. But I like what, what you,
Background and experience.
how you've changed that experiences, because I wanted to make, I was concerned that if it just said the diversity, then it's, it, people are going to look at it in a whole different context, and that's not what was intended for this purpose here. You know, because you want to make sure there's people that bring various experiences to it.
Editing it right now, but the only word that changed from what the policy group had before, who, I don't know who's editing it, but it, it said, "Is there adequate diversity of background?" And I think that's the confusing one. That's like, "Oh, you want somebody who's female, male, different age groups, different ethnic groups." I, I, so the only word that we changed was, instead of background, we changed it to skill. Now, if the word diversity is an issue, it could be replaced with range of skills. But the idea is that you, when you start a charter school, you want it to be founded by people who have education experience, business experience, financial experience, and that's what we're trying to get at with this.
I like what Commissioner Beck said.
Yeah, so I, I was saying delete diversity of.
Yeah.
Is there adequate backgrounds and experience to address?
Yeah.
And just take diversity, because diversity can have all sorts of contexts.
Do we need to say of the founder?
Or taking out the first?
There's nothing on the NOI that indicates you're a board member, you're not a board member, it's just founders.
But that's,
That's true, they can put titles, yeah.
Yeah.
It feels like we should put something else. Are there adequate, I, I want personnel with, well, I want like the word, person, of personnel or something. I, I don't mind background or experience, I think.
They might be hiring, I, I don't think that's appropriate. Because, it's not, because they could be, like, just because this, this is the founding team, doesn't mean they're not going to hire rock star people that have where their gaps are. So I think just leaving it as is, this is just an information thing. This isn't, we're not evaluating them, we're not. This is just like, hey, we're noticing, you know, like, there's, you, you have a bunch of people listen here, but there's nobody with any finance, like,
It's, mine was more a grammar thing. Adequate experience, does that make sense? Adequate backgrounds? It feels like of,
It should be in, of the,
Of all persons, or, or of the applicant team, or something. On the applicant team.
Yeah. I can't see if the sentence does seem to leave off something.
I mean, it,
What group are you talking?
But number two is the, yeah, it's based on,
It's all, we're talking about,
It's referring to number two.
Talking about a random group, we're talking about the people that,
Right.
Yeah.
Are there varied? Are there varied backgrounds?
I don't think it has to be varied. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, we're overthinking it. It's just giving them feedback right away to be like, "Hey, we noticed it's a bunch of teachers. You guys might want to like, consider getting someone in the business community. You might want to consider, like, someone who has financial experience." Like, that, and that's literally it, they don't even have to. It's just like giving them that feedback of like, maybe all teachers isn't the best way to go.
I like the addition of, um, "on the applicant team," or "of the applicant team," something like that. That's, that's good.
Well, and we want to look at, um, six.
And they've got one more.
Okay. Yeah, so if we could move now to number six, and this kind of actually falls into place with what we discussed this morning, with vision and mission, and, um, maybe honing in on the feedback for, because they do have to provide the vision and mission statement in that NOI. So the suggestion was for, does the, does, does the mission define the purpose of the school?
The only thing I'm wondering if maybe we would consider adding is, um, define the purpose and the unique quality of the school.
Yeah.
Because I think that's what, like, we really want to see in the charter, right? Like, in a charter, is what, what makes them different? And that should be in their mission.
Because it's statute. It's also statute that they're supposed to be different than the other schools around them. Yeah, yeah.
That's correct, there is innovation on number nine, though. I'm talking about their mission statement.
Right.
Including,
This is just the vision and mission statement.
Like, I don't want, I, I, I would be discouraged by a school who has a generic mission of educating students alone.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about it.
Oh, yeah, innovatively educating students, like,
We're, we're going to graduate successful, we're, we're, we're graduating successful students.
Cool.
Great. What's your mission? You know, because it's not, tell me a school that wouldn't have that mission. If you don't, then you shouldn't be working in that school. So it has to be something different than what the average school, you know, So it has to be something different than what the average school, you know, tell me what it is. And doing the contract negotiations, you, you see that, you know, it's like, whoever approved that, well-
Then if we're, because I, and I think especially as we start looking at mission goals, like, if their mission isn't a good quality mission that has that unique feature, then we can't evaluate them on how they're implementing something unique in the school either.
Commissioner Taylor?
One thing I'd like to, to express is that a unique quality of, of a school could be the goal of, of graduating 95% of their students at 90% proficiency with a classical education, all right? So I think we don't, we don't want to get so hung up, though, on, I know that's statute, but unique can be performing better than the district, you know, not, not really, but, but kind of.
That's different from the district to get those, like, they're still doing something different.
Even if it's just a classical education.
Well, then that should be in there, right? That's the unique feature.
Sure, but that's not, that's not-
If they don't put that in there.
Or whatever.
No, that is unique.
It is unique.
That absolutely is. I think anything that makes them different from a district school, but I think you're right, it has to be, like, we can't be narrow minded and like, that's not unique enough or something like that.
Right. But, you know, if you're just going to say, we're graduating, you know, we're going to graduate scholars or what, you know, it's like, yeah, you know, you know, our kids are going to be successful. Oh, I'm sorry.
The only thing I might suggest is sort of unique quality, uniqueness, because there's probably going to be more than one quality.
Yeah.
On the purpose and uniqueness.
Uniqueness of the school.
I, I just did want to add that I don't think the law narrows or requires a lot of things from the charter school. So I, I think that it can be as broad as you all have been discussing.
And absolute, you know, it is kind of up to each individual commissioner, when they're looking at the applicant, to decide, is that unique enough? You know, and that's part of the discussion, is kind of fleshing out what really is going to make it, you know, really unique from the school down the street or, or whatever. I, so, I'm sorry.
That's one of the- That's one of the things I'm addressing right now, actually, in my campaign. If anyone doesn't know, I'm running for reelection. Anyone out there, the thousands of people, need more signatures. But the, one of the things I mentioned is that you cannot be just another small school as an extension of the district. So many people want to just operate their own small school. But if you're just repeating what's already being done, instead of doing something unique, oh, she just left. Yeah, mascot is kind of out there, too.
Going to move on to, not a campaign slogan. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt.
Well, I was just wondering, is this a report that's going to the commissioners and the schools? Just the schools, thank you.
And, and my question is just understanding the document, so. Oh, I do, yeah. My question is just understanding the document. So these are kind of edits to the notice of intent to get just a little deeper on the-
No, it's, it's, the notice of intent is separate. This is a feedback sheet that's going to go to the applicants.
Oh, okay.
So just, it's, it's kind of a, you know-
You receive the notice-
It's not a, you, we're not rating it.
Yep.
But this is just for your, you know, hopefully to help them-
Yes.
Make a better application, because someone's going to be looking at it, not us, and saying, ooh, you know, that, that mission really isn't clear enough, so maybe you need to work on this. Or like Commissioner Burt said, oh, that founding team is all teachers. Maybe you need someone with a finance background on there. You know, this, they do with it what they want.
Right, okay. That, that's helpful, I was to the-
After they've turned in the NOI. But way before the application comes in. Correct. And this was also somewhat in response as well to, you know, the school that put a, a number of students that were going to serve, that- Put them out of the opportunity to open a school because they, they didn't, they weren't meeting the statutory requirements. And even though you say an applicant team should know it, it's tough to, to go through and find all that. So this was also to kind of pick up on something like that. And, you know, if they don't change their application, that, that's on them then.
Yeah.
You know, they, they were given the guidance that that's not going to work.
Yeah, that's great. I, I think that's good, and, and, yeah, that's, I have nothing.
Sure.
Let me clarify the timing of this. So in January, a new school, I, I mean, an applicant team submits an NOI. As soon as possible after that, a, a person will do, there's eight this year, a person would do all eight, send them to the school for feedback, hopefully get it in February or something. Their application and all the trainings with Missy take, or their trainings with Missy take place, and then they're due in June. So this is just a brief response to the NOI as quickly as possible. And actually, one of my questions, excuse me, for tomorrow is whether this group wants the group of eight to, to get this document filled out for this year. I just didn't know how to draft the motion. And then Patty, um, they don't-
I don't think it would hurt. I mean, I think it would only help, because that's the intent, is for this to help schools. So I don't, I don't think it would hurt for the schools to get that feedback. No, on eight. The second piece is- Oh, we didn't do the vision part? Okay, yeah, the second bullet on, on six, we did not look at, I don't think, that closely. Does the vision align with the student needs in New Mexico and describe what success would look like?
I also think, I don't know if it should say New Mexico as much, it should say community.
Yeah.
Because there's different needs in different communities.
In the community. Okay, we're good with that one? Yeah. Okay, so then we are on number eight, the second bullet. Okay, whatever evidence does the founding team present to demonstrate community need? Oh, yeah, I, well-
I guess that just looks like what the question is. The question is to provide the evidence.
So I, so let me ask, because I, this is the way I sort of look at it. To me, that first bullet is the, in the NOI, they're presenting a clear idea and maybe some evidence that there's no schools in our area that do that, or do it well. But in, in the second bullet, they're showing how they've done their, so, so far to date, this is the community outreach that we've done. That's, to me, the evidence that they're providing there. And maybe I'm seeing this wrong, but that's what, that's how I looked at it. That they have to show, you know, yes, this is what we want to do, this isn't in the area. But now, the, these are all the groups that we've talked about, what we want to do. So we've, we've reached out to all of these groups in the community so far. The expectation is by community input, they've done even more. But that they've done, they have evidence of the research that the community really wants this and needs it. Not just they've decided this is lacking. So, okay? Okay? Yeah?
Hold on a minute.
Oh, sure.
But is the second, second bullet seems redundant to me. I mean, you've just asked them to provide evidence of the team's assessment, survey, whatever. And the second bullet says, what evidence?
The first bullet says there's a clear, and there's- Oh, gotcha, okay, gotcha.
I like the idea of it being in there, because then-
Make it clearer.
Reviewer an opportunity to say, you know, you might want to consider written surveys or survey results by the time your application comes in. You might want to consider doing a community hearing and a sign in sheet. Like, I think that gives the opportunity for the reviewer to maybe tell them where their weakness might be and what they're presenting right then.
Yeah. Or the community outreach has been very narrow, to only certain groups.
Narrowed for-
And therefore, you know, they wouldn't have that feedback if all I had to do is present, this is what I've done, and there's no feedback about what you've done.
Yeah.
You want to add the word, what, the word additional? What additional evidence?
No.
No, I think it's just the evidence. How did you come about understanding the community need? How did you do that?
Yeah, but by putting that bullet in, it opens the door for the discussion. You lose.
Well, yeah, because we, we, last year, when we had a school come before us potentially, and I think at that time Chair Brower brought up the point, which I thought was tremendous, because I hadn't even thought of it. Well, how, how are you, how do you know that there's a need there? Did you do any research? And the school said, no, we haven't. But, you know, and that was pretty telling, so.
Yeah. And that's-
And we don't want them to get to their, put in their application and then say, oh, we're going to start the input now. Like, it'd be better for them to hear it in the NOI time of like, you should be doing it between now and June, not after June. Like, you need to do all your input now. But if we wait to give them that feedback in Ju, you know, during input hearing, that's the first time we talk to them, and then it's too late for them.
Well, that was the one applicant team. It's like, we're looking forward to doing that. You should be looking forward to continuing it, but you should have been doing it already, and you didn't.
And I don't mind if a school does it after the NOI, right? They fill out the NOI, they think they have need, and then, once they fill out the NOI, if they really go through, that's, that's fine. Like, I don't think they had to do the outreach completely before the NOI, right?
No.
So, I think this is such a good opportunity to have that conversation with an applicant.
No, I, I think the expectation is it would be continuing, but it's like, but if you've only, you know, oh, we went to, you know, the Realtors Association, and there's 100 people moving into town, that's not enough evidence of need, you know? It's not. It's coming to our school. Because we're mandating that they have to have kids, and they have to be of school age before we'll sell them a house, you know? I think we're done. We're good with this? Okay. So we are now on to item number six, discussion of scheduling renewal hearings and document submissions for contract amendments. So I'm going to turn it over to to the individual who is leading the contract negotiations.
So. Excuse me. What number, because there's six A, B, just meeting calendar? I'm on six, but there's three sixes. You don't have that? Yours is broken.
Well, you have it reversed.
I think six is the renewal hearings in December, which I don't think is Vice Chair Correa. I think he's number seven.
The six on-
I don't even have a number seven.
Six in our documents is six meeting calendar, six A charters, this is the renewal.
That's correct. That's for, that's for November, December. So item number six is for November and December.
But that's for, that's for renewals in December.
Because we are going to need to add more days in November.
That's renewal stuff, that's not contract.
Renewal, that's right, you're number seven.
It's, you're right. I'm sorry. I take that back, I wasn't turning it over for renewals.
So I think all we have to do is add the pink into the 11th, 12th, and 13th of November, right? Because, because 11th's a holiday, that's right. It would have to be the 12th, 13th. Correct? To correct it, because we're going to-
Seven?
Seven. Three, three, and one, right?
Three and one, unless we can talk more people into it. Karina, do you think there's any ability to talk more people into November?
Oh, hold on. Challenge is, we can't do the 11th, because it's a holiday. We can't, we can't add any more into the 11th. So you do three 12, three 13, one on 14. That's where it is. You can't really go to the 11th, because it's a national holiday, Veterans Day.
The two days, just the 12th and 13th, shouldn't that be adequate, given that we have the four days in December, the week of the ninth?
Well, we only have, we only, we're, we're doing right now, there's seven schools that have expressed a preference for November, so that-
Well, they, they can express a preference, and we only have room for six.
No.
We have, we could, we can do one and-
Make them do November.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, they have a preference for November, but we only have six slots for November.
And we can do one on Thursday morning for the-
So we don't, this is what we're trying not to do. We're trying not to add another one into December, because we're overloaded in December already. So we need a more balance in November. The problem is, based on preference, we don't have a balance right now. But we don't want to say to a, a school that has a November preference, no, you're going in December, because we're not going to be able to fit them in well in December.
I understand. So maybe on the morning of the 14th, we do a contract first.
Right.
And then we do our work session.
Yeah, and just remember this-
Or two, it might be two. I mean, it's possible.
Yeah, because we didn't-
Huge agenda, though. I'm kidding you.
We're not including any potential district charters that would flip over to us. This is just the 20 that we're renewing without that. So I think this is a good plan going in.
Yeah, because, you know, now that we've got the performance framework done, we've got the contracting done, our load and work sessions should be lessening, it really should. So, you know, there may, there may be a day when you say, hey, you know what? We don't need a work session this month. I don't know if that's ever going to happen, but it could happen.
Well, it will always be, I mean, because we have first and second reading.
That's, if we have something up, we may not have something up. It's possible. But anyway, I think it's, it's fair to say that we could do two on that Thursday.
Yeah.
And, and move, you know, nothing on that work session I see would have to, would be so critical.
As long, as long as we get our badges to get in here.
Director?
What is the ideal number in November?
Seven.
Okay, well, then we're good, because there's two more that could be added, so there's nine, right? The slight preference for December, sounds like those two schools would be someone we could talk to if we wanted to add more in December.
The problem is, we can't do that Monday, because it's a holiday. So it, it's, you know, it's difficult to, to schedule it in, unless we said, you know, we're not going to have a work session at all, and we'll only do renewals. And if it's only a slight preference, then I think we're, I think we're good. Matt?
Chair Gibson, Deputy Director Russell has her hand raised as well.
Chair Gibson, thank you. I, I can't share a screen to show it, but document six B shows, there we go. If, if seven is the ideal for November, then, then we're, we're good. because six prefer November, and one has no preference. So if we schedule those seven schools in November and the rest in December, I think that works.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thanks for providing that because it was, it was helpful to see what schools kind of wanted to do. Matt?
I just wanted to flag that our conference is December 11th through the 13th. If you want, I think just moving forward, if we can try and accommodate, we did get the entirety of Tamaya, so all those side rooms. And so, the 12th might be hard, but the 13th, I just want to throw that out there. We're a long ways from like, you know, demarcating what, what is in which room. But we're happy to, to work on, you know, hosting you for those days. We're on the hook for a six-figure contract, so I don't, we can't move our dates.
So, and...
December.
December.
Just move all the contracts into Tamaya.
Heck, yeah.
We, we can get it figured out if, if, if that's what the commission...
I mean, we did host, that did host a meeting one time during his conference for us because we, we had an amendment that we absolutely had to hear for a school. So, we, we did a meeting down there, and it was actually the best-attended meeting because schools, schools came and, you know, sat in on the meeting. So it was, it was, it was standing room only. But I, I, I personally hate the fact that we're not going to be able to go to a lot of the sessions because we're going to be doing those. But if it's, if we're accommodating schools so that they can be there, and it's less of a drive for me to get there. So I appreciate that. But we would have to absolutely have an assurance soon about the Zoom capabilities because...
We would hire Santa Fe Audio Visuals.
Santa Fe Audio, well, I don't know, because can they, sometimes you can't go into certain facilities. They would just have to double-check. Tamaya might, Tamaya might have their own people.
They, they have their own...
They do. They have a complement of audio people.
It would be shocking to me if they don't do that.
The live streaming?
Zoom, yeah, and the live streaming, that might be the challenge.
We, we can ask them.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
And if not, then we can hire Santa Fe Audio.
They, they can't, they won't let anyone else do this.
Anyone else, then, that's what I figured.
So, but they're very full-service. We have almost a year to figure it out. It seems figure-outable. So I think what we'll do is, is figure out, or just kind of have in our head, we need to give you all space there. Does that sound appropriate right now? And then we can figure out those details?
Yep.
Okay. Great.
Appreciate that.
You need to give input to the schools in November, 30 days before. You're working with these schools already. October 17th is already a working session for you. So you could either do a one-hour virtual meeting, which you've done in the past by Zoom, or you could use part of October 17th. I just think we should let the schools know which one you want to do. And if you want to add a one-hour virtual meeting, we'd need to change the calendar as well.
I don't, yeah, because I don't know, the 17th is in 30 days.
Right.
So, and I wonder, I don't know if the schools would be willing to accept, like, if they could, if we could, if they would work, like, if it could be, that way we, because it would be nice if we could meet on the 17th and do it, on, on October 17th, on the work session, or on the 18th, and then get them to them on the 18th, if they would agree to having 25 days or whatever it is instead of the 30.
I think you could do it either way. A one-hour Zoom is easy, and the 17th and ask the schools is possible as well.
It'd have to be on, like, October 9th, because we have November 6th, that Wednesday is the, like, little quick Zoom. So it'd be October 9th for the November schools. So if there are, if, then my question for this is, just interested, they turn in their applications October 1st?
September.
September 1st. Okay. All right.
Yeah, that, we've pushed everything back, but that's why they had to agree to that. And they're, you know, said they'll, they'll do that, but... Yeah, I mean, I, I struggle a little bit with it not being 30 days. I would, I certainly would prefer it to be on the 17th to get it done, but...
On the 9th?
On the 9th, I think, is just the safest thing to do. Because, let's go back to the word consistency.
Okay, so what's happening on the 9th?
A one-hour Zoom meeting for the PEC members to give input to the chair for the letters that go out to the schools, for the November schools.
We've done most of those, we've done all of them on Zoom, for the new applications and the, and the renewals.
Can I request that meeting be at 12:45? Starting at 12:45? I do. Be one. Yeah.
I'll completely clear my calendar just for you. I know, I know.
All right, so just, just for clarity, I have a, there's a motion drafted for tomorrow. It is going to identify those seven schools, including Amy Beal High School that had no preference. September 1 renewal submit on November hearing. It'll list the other 13 for October 1 renewal submit all December hearing. An October 9th at 1:00 PM virtual meeting. And November 12, 13th, and the morning of the 14th for PEC renewal hearing date. So we're adding two calendar days and one one-hour session.
Right.
I'm sorry to throw something into the mix. Can we make it 1:30?
One to win.
Oh, one to two, okay. Be mine, I think I'm going to be out of class at 1:15. Yeah.
I'll just send in my...
So I, I also, I'm, I'm happy to do anytime. And if I can't come, I'll just send my comments to Julia and to send it to Patty, so.
Thank you for being flexible.
I just won't be there. Okay, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Ingham has...
Well, I just wanted to find out specifically, are, when we're talking March, is that the contract negotiations?
Yeah, sure. The whole week that's blocked out?
It's, no, no, March has, yeah, it, it's got a regular meeting and work group, but it has the first three days for contract negotiations. So I believe I have a PSCO meeting on 11.
So Commissioner Correa was going to do the sign-up and talk about the sign-up for that and that, and that calendar, but that, those March... Those March dates are, in fact, the contract negotiation dates for this year. But he's... Well, we haven't gotten, but it was, Commissioner Ingham was asking about the blockout of those March dates. So now I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Correa for contract negotiations because we've got sign-up, and there are some, there's a slight change to the schedule.
Thank you. So I, first off, I can't read that, it's too small, and I don't have it on my computer. Okay.
Okay, so...
Now I can read it.
Actually, Missy, if you move to the next tab, which is by date, we can have up to five commissioners at each one. So there's four on March 11th, three on March 12th.
Yeah, why isn't this uploaded in ours?
Uh, it can be. It's just the, it... I mean, we can move it. This is the spreadsheet that we're using, and it's in the Google Drive.
I knew, I knew I saw it somewhere.
I...
But I thought I'd been in the Google.
Yeah, it is a, commissioners, it is in our Google Drive.
That's okay. Do you want to move it, Missy?
It is?
Or do you want to make a copy and move it?
What number is it? Do you know?
I'll find it.
It's a little bit hard to get there, though.
Is, when we were on the renewals, if we have that many schools, are we, are we counting in schools that are moving from district to, are, are we not allowing that at this point?
We don't know.
We don't know.
Do that.
We, right, that's what I was asking. So it's not counting those schools? So we could get jammed with a few more of those, right?
We could.
We could, yes. But it's hard, I mean, it's, it is possible that we're looking at the calendar again and saying, based on this, we have to, you know, I don't know. There could be five schools. If there were like five schools, but we're talking renewal, not contract negotiation.
Right, I, I went back.
Right, okay. So, yeah, it is possible that we could, we won't know until October.
Won't know until...
No, because applications are not due until October.
They don't give you any preliminary?
To tell us.
Well, they could, but that, that doesn't mean it's an absolute. Schools could say, yeah, I'm going to go, and then, at the last moment, they could say, no, I decided I'm going to stay with who I know. So we won't know as an absolute to be able to then have to make any decisions until October, when they submit their applications to us.
So would, would we be able to put any in November if we had?
No, because they would have had to submit the application in September to get everything done in time. We wouldn't have been able to give them their feedback. You know, there wouldn't have been preliminary analysis of it, so we could not.
I got the impression on the schools that we did this last time that the renewal for schools that are moving is not near as, didn't, didn't require all the same information.
No, not all the information is available that we would like because the district didn't do things. But the renewal application itself is exactly the same. They would have to, so... Director?
Yes, so, so Commissioner Ingham, we keep track of all schools and their expiration date for their term, and we reach out to all schools, local and state, when we get ready to host renewal trainings. They don't have to come. We're not saying we're trying to come, you know, recruit you. But actually, the renewal applications can look pretty different across authorizers. So they probably, it would behoove them to have an idea, and they typically let us know ahead of time if they are planning to come with us. It's not a whole lot of ahead of time. But we might get word that they are thinking about it. It doesn't obligate them because they have until October 1. But that, that's how it works. We engage with them, and we...
No mechanism to get them in on November. November can't have, can't possibly have.
I mean, it is possible. I mean, we could do the same thing with district schools as we're doing with the state-authorized schools and throw it out there and say to the, to the state-authorized schools that are up for renewal, if you're considering coming to the PEC, would you consider turning your application in in September instead of October? We could do that.
You have.
So, so would they? Yes.
Okay.
Tell them no.
I mean, it's, it's certainly, I mean, that, we could ask them, just like we did with ours. And, you know, they can either, if they say yes, they, they need to understand then you're committing in September, this is where you're going. You don't get another bite at the apple in October to submit an application to the district just because maybe feedback came and it's like, oh, no, it doesn't look like I'm going to get through, that this is, yeah, yeah. I mean, we could do that. Yep, no.
On this, can everybody see it up there, the 11th? These are the order in which we're doing things, on Monday, the 11th. We're staffed on the 11th. We, obviously, we have me, we've got Chair Gibson and Secretary Beck. And if there are two others that would like to participate in contracts on the 11th, speak now or forever hold your peace.
I signed up on the 11th.
I just want to say, I just want to say, if you guys want to get, do it, I, I could drop out of a few of these if need be. So, you know...
There's plenty of space.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, then... And then Rebecca, you just signed up for the 11th? Okay. Well, then, then you could do the one, if your virtual meeting is at 1, you could probably do 8:30, 10:30, and 3:30. It's probably what you could do. But then you'd have to be, if you're virtual, we want you here in person. Okay. It's fine if that works for you, because we still would have four, you'd be the fifth, that's fine. Then done. So you're going to be on, good, thank you, Commissioner Ingham. So on the 12th, I have the challenge on the 12th because on the morning, I have, well, yeah, thank you for just now changing that, because I have to put in my thing over at the county clerk.
Oh, are you writing this?
Yes, it's Correa for PEC on Facebook. So anyway. Yeah. So on the 12th...
People are listing you because you may be late, but I think you're going to be there unless you want to be...
I could be done by probably, I mean, the county clerk said, and I plan on being first in line, that I could very easily be done in 15 minutes, but that doesn't bring me back here until 9:30. And that wouldn't be fair. So I'll just not participate in the first one. So it would be good if we had a fourth person that would want to participate on the 12th. But you can still come in the afternoon. It's, we just want to make sure we have three people at least, and they'll come in the afternoon. But I still need somebody in the morning. Yeah, because we only have two. I just won't run then. I'm just kidding.
I could come up late as well. I mean, I have to do the same thing.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you're in the same boat.
It's the first one.
I, yeah, I'm not going to the first one, no matter what.
Well, let's go ahead.
That's why.
Uh, let's put Commissioner Ingham in as the fourth person so far for the day, but that leaves the opening for the first, well, actually...
No, we can't make the morning. So it's the first, it's the first...
You can move that.
One that we're challenged with.
I know, they don't.
Only two of us can be there for that first one.
And if I, I would, well, yeah, I just, I'm not going to go to explorable KIRK no matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah, and KT's done that in the past.
Right.
You know, I'm very comfortable with that. Could you take the 8:30 meeting virtually? And even more if you want. I'm, the more, the merrier. We all learn, and we all get good for the schools. Okay, so KT's the man-man. Okay, on the 13th, we have Commissioners Beck, Correa, and Gibson. And you can see what schools are there. and, um, you can see what schools are there. And on the 12th, what we've done with San Diego Riverside, Rachel is who is the person that's handling the 12th. We are giving them more time. It became very clear that they weren't gonna be ready, and we're helping them as much as we can. We're having a meeting in probably Bernalillo, an in-person meeting where we're going down there to help them. And, uh, so we're giving them more time. That's why you see that, uh, changed. So on the 13th, um, do you want to do the 13th, Katie, can you? Well, then why don't we put Stuart in in the all-day, and then why don't we just have you there in the morning and the afternoon? Katie, is that okay? Commissioner, okay. And then on the 14th, uh, we have a work session later in that afternoon, but just N M S A in the morning, and they have been told to bring entertainment.
So just so commissioners, now we're looking at San Diego Riverside for April 9th, and that will most likely be in Bernalillo because why, they don't have to drive all the way up here, and it's easier for almost everyone to meet in Bernalillo, so. It's in April because we've pushed, as Commissioner Correa said, we're pushing them because they're not, they need a little more support, so they're not quite ready for their scheduled March date, so we're rescheduling them for April, April 9th. It'll be in Bernalillo, but we're not sure.
Not sure of the exact location.
I could come to that negotiation.
We're not sure whether it's morning or afternoon yet.
I, I could probably be.
But it's, it's up, it's more up to their availability, but that's what it's looking like now.
Fine, if you want to just put me down for.
That'd be great.
I would like to be a part of that.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I took that, I'm getting a little bit, um. Okay, so, oh, you started, then I'll just.
Next one? Honestly, I don't remember.
Are we gonna be starting our work session late on the 14th?
We thought we would skip the, um, spotlight.
Spotlight, we're not doing the spotlight. It shouldn't take that long for N M S A.
Just with them aside, we may want to consider, well, what?
Everyone's doorbell just.
Yeah. Um, I mean, if, because it'd be easier for the school, if we don't want to do 8:30, we could do a different time for N M S A, since they're the only one that day. Done, 8:30, take that back. Um, okay, there you have, there's my, that's my, uh, 15 minutes. Yeah.
Hi.
Katie.
So on the 13th, I just looked at my, my meeting time, uh, I could do 1:30, 3:30, and 8:30. The only time I can't probably do is 5:30.
That's cool. Uh, that's gonna be a good one you're missing.
Sure is. Oh, yeah. You might not.
It's the Disneyland. Okay, so, um, there you have it, gang, our contract schedule.
Okay. Now we're on to item number eight, which is.
I don't have anything here.
Commissioner, there isn't because.
Oh, okay.
You didn't give us anything, so.
And I very intentionally did not give anything, because right now, it's conceptual. So the idea of having either C S D or anyone do a bunch of research initially doesn't make sense until we decide as a body, this is something we want to pursue. The something is, one of the things I noticed, um, and we did with middle college and with, um, N M S A, these are schools that were doing really well in areas, but they just weren't knocking it out of the park in math. And especially when we looked at, when I looked at N M S A, you know, and we, you remember renewals, um, great choir. Uh, you remember that, uh, in the seventies on English and science, in the thirties on math, and they really took exception to that themselves, owned the challenge and the problem, looked for a solution, sent some, to some teachers to a program in New Hampshire, and, uh, it was a program specifically to teach them how to reach and teach kids who were math averse, for whatever reason. They started to get bad at it, they didn't like it, they didn't find it relevant, whatever it was. But if they were going to increase the proficiency in math among their students, they needed to take a completely fresh approach. Their approach was teaching their teachers how to teach and how to reach these kids. And so I would like us to do that. What I'm proposing, and I would just love to get buy-in on and discussion, is, no, we're not gonna send a bunch of our math teachers to New Hampshire. We can't afford that. What we can afford is have them come to us, um, whether it's in Santa Fe or, uh, or Albuquerque, just have their instructors. I'm not, I don't think so, but, uh, either Albuquerque, probably come up here, because who doesn't want to come to Santa Fe? And, uh, and it's for state charters only, and it would be limited to probably the directors of the school and math instructors. It's not an open, you know, thing for everybody, and it's a two-day or a one-and-a-half-day, regular travel time symposium to just teach people how to teach, they know how to teach math, how to be better at reaching kids and being receptive to learning math. And I think that's, I mean, statewide, we're in the toilet on math more than anything else. And if this pilot program is successful, which I believe it will be, I mean, Patty has the idea of rolling out to different subject matters and getting people here, whether it's science or social studies or English writing, whatever it might be. Well, let's see about this idea of bringing experts here and having a symposium specifically for state charter schools. Thoughts?
Um, yeah, so if you look at the Vista scores, the math scores are all across the board are significantly lower than the E L A or even the science. Um, and if you studied the impact of COVID, sorry, I know you hate that word, um, from three, four years ago, the one that was impacted was math. Uh, and when I was at Sandia, uh, we specifically had math, um, classes every day for the students because it's such a abstract concept to the students compared to what else they learn. So I think it's a great idea, awesome idea, um, because, um, to your point, on, on the Vista scores and the, the, um, assessment scores, math is way low, uh, in proficiency compared to the other subjects.
Because our 2% only pays for state sponsored charter schools, and.
But here's my point. We're gonna pay for it anyway. Right, you're gonna pay for whoever you have, okay, to come. Now, as far as the number, whatever cost it is for the facility or something like that, it seems like if it's not gonna cost, it's not gonna cost us any more to include other charter schools, math teachers, then why would we not?
I think the expense would be greater if there were more participants. That's one reason. There's another bullet. Uh, I, and I, I don't represent district charter schools. I, and even though I say this all the time, it's about all of our kids, but right now, we're piloting something. And keeping it small, keeping it nimble, I think is, um, keeping it more efficient, I think is a better way to do it the very first time around. And, um, if this is something that works, hey, man, the districts can knock themselves out because they have the money to do it. I know all these districts have plenty of money in reserves to do it, but I just feel like we have 59, who knows how many charters by then? But let's say we have 57 charters, let's say with a director and two people from each school, that's 150 people. Because we're talking about accommodations as well, and not just meeting space. And I feel that as the P E C, and we've, we've seen this in what we've gone through in all of the items in the previous meeting and how we set our, all of our values and goals, we're, we're laser focused on our schools and other people learning from what we're doing and replicating it. But this is a pilot.
Yeah, this would be a great template to take the, I mean, that the other schools could do.
Providing accommodations also, so hotel rooms.
Yeah, yeah.
I, well, that.
That's a different story. I understand that.
Yeah, and see, I think that has to be parsed out.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, you're looking at, are you going to pay for accommodations? Because if you are paying for accommodations, because people, some people, folks are gonna have to travel a significant difference, then that is part of the reason why you, you're not paying for everyone, because that would make the cost. I think there might have to be a consideration as well, I don't know, but there might have to be a consideration for maybe, uh, compensating for some substitute pay for the schools because you're asking staff to come.
The point.
So that that's, um, something that might have to be offered as well. And we would not, you know, district schools, they don't pay into our 2%. You know, so I think there's those costs, and I agree. If we open it up to more, then that meeting space is going to have to be larger. And the presenters might also say, well, if I'm presenting to this many, then my fee does go up because I'm gonna have to do something differently or more or whatever. That's a possibility, but the facility itself is definitely a consideration.
I think altruistically, Stuart, I agree with you. If you're gonna do something that's really cool and special, why not do it for more people? But in this particular case, it's keeping it smaller, intimate, seeing if this can work. And if you start having 250 people instead of 110 people, it changes the entire dynamic. Even in terms of like when we think of the, of the, uh, sessions that we go to, the ones that are the most effective are where people get to get into working groups, sit around tables, and hash things out.
And, and as a classroom teacher, having 19 kids in a classroom, they're gonna learn a lot more than 40. Uh, same thing in these seminars. If you have lesser people in these seminars, you know, they're gonna be able to interact a lot better with each other. You know, if you have 25 people in a seminar, they're gonna be able to interact a lot better than 60 or 50.
So you are talking with two teachers theoretically, two teachers from every school and a head administrator, you are still hitting closer to that 250 number.
And that's why I say right now, we're bringing this up conceptually. We're not hashing out all the details yet. There was no point in doing that if the commission decided, nah, we don't want to do this. But if, if conceptually, this is something that appeals to us, then we get into, maybe it's one teacher. Maybe some of these, most, some, many of these schools probably only have one lead math instructor, and many of these schools may not want to send their head administrator. I mean, Eric Kreitz didn't go to New Hampshire from N M S A, you know, the teachers went. So, I mean, we can say, head administrator, ix-nay, this is, you know, they'll come back and they'll let you know what they learned, you know, and we, we want to keep it reasonable, uh, money-wise too. Just because we have money we collect from the charters doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Well, I, I agree. Matt, um, would you have an idea, if a perception of something like this, how many schools would jump on participating on something like this?
You should come to the mic if you're gonna speak. Thanks.
Um, no, we were really planning on coming here to find out more about what the vision is, and then we'll certainly throw it out, see, see what people think. Who was the group that, um?
Who was the group you?
Yeah, like who would be the presenters? Because I think that would be a. They're gonna cost over 60,000 bucks?
We're gonna, I mean.
This'd be great.
I mean, the, I mean, if you want to just talk to schools and see what they think, um, I mean, Tim just mentioned like, why would somebody not want to send their instructors? I mean, here's, you know, uh, and don't quote anyone.
Um, so I know that there's a Math and Science Bureau here that always had a STEM symposium for all the years I worked at P E D. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if they still do that, but it does feel duplicitous to what they're already doing. Um, so I would say maybe we should see if they're doing something that's already available to schools first. Um, and then, I actually, I'm, I'm, I don't know if, uh, I, I am, I'm hesitant on this. I'm like, as, as excited of it, I think, as you are.
I'm sure.
I know. Well, I guess I do think, you know, schools are, um, I, I, I think, I think we're doing, I, it's mildly backwards. I understand why they're coming to us first, just to see if we'd even be interested. But I think the first people, before I say yes or I'm interested or not, would be first to ask schools if they're interested. Because I think if you tell them, we're gonna do a math symposium, and they're like, why? Like, why? Like.
Why? Because your math scores are in the toilet.
We can, that's fine, but that's not, once again, I think there's school autonomy and how they want to do things and how they want to improve their scores. And the, the thing that I've had the most struggle with, probably at state level, with trying to give trainings statewide, is it's very difficult. It's, it's very difficult because not everyone's interested in the same things. The offerings, like, um, there are certain schools who already have math programs, and you can, you can pull in great, amazing math, like educators, but if it doesn't follow the curriculum that's being set at that school, they just wasted a whole day coming to a training. Like, they just wasted a day. Um, it's like, I, I, it, it can just be difficult from the state level to push, like, to me, this feels top-down, and I don't know if that's going to have the impact that we're wanting it to have. I think for me, what I would prefer to see, like, if we're, if the reason, the reason we're doing this is so that we don't revert 2% money, like, right? I would rather, once again, come up with some kind of like training token or something that like, schools can uh, like, be like, oh, we would like give them training opportunities, and schools can select from it, and then we pay for the training for the schools, right? And they get like 15 different offerings, and we say, you know, here's all the things that the P E C would provide for your school, and here's all these opportunities. Your school can select up to two opportunities, and we'll pay for three teachers to go to it. Instead of, here's one thing, take it or leave it, and that's it. I think, like, and as, as teachers, teachers are more and more anti-going-to-force trainings, like, they, they're, it's much more, um, valuable for teachers when they can select what makes sense for them to. So I like the, I, the concept of it, the idea of it, fine, but I just think in my experience, the execution of like, doing one state-level training that crosses everyone, it's, it's very difficult, especially in ma, especially in math instruction because it is done differently by whichever curriculum your school's using.
Okay, so, um, hold on a second, is this okay?
No.
No? Um, couldn't just agree with you more. So if the state has all of these programs, that's great. How's that working out for them? That's my first question. Hold on one second.
I think we should add, I said we should ask and see if it's being successful.
How's that working out for them?
No one, what, no one's coming, no one's.
The scores are in the cellar, so I'm just saying, that's not, it's not working. I think if you were to ask anyone in this building about their, to me, ridiculous slogan, "Math is me", they wouldn't be able to tell you what it means. Okay, hold on one second. That's one of four bullet points. The other thing is, you mentioned force training. Nobody's forced to do anything. Um, this is a concept right now, and with a concept, this is means, you know, Matt maybe talks to schools, different people chime in and say, you know something that's kind of a neat idea, but our teachers aren't interested? And you know what? Maybe only, maybe only 10 schools are interested in sending their math instructors here to do this. That's 10 schools that are investing in their kids in math, and we're paying for it. Um, so it's definitely not a forced training. The idea that it's top-down couldn't be further from the truth because we're not making them do anything. They completely just have their choice as to whether or not they want to attend. They don't, that's fine. Um, I mean, I commend middle school, uh, the middle, uh, the middle college, and I commend, um, N M S A for recognizing their challenge and saying, you know something, this is not okay with us. We're gonna do something about this. And that's why they sent their people to New Hampshire. Um, the idea actually of our doing this to revert, so we don't have to revert any money, this is the first time, I hadn't even ever even thought of that. Uh, the idea that we just want to spend money rather than revert it. No, I'm never motivated by that. And I think all of us are motivated by doing what's best for kids in general. So this is, this is, it, you know, if I wanted to open a restaurant, I'd like say, this is my idea, this is where I want it to be. It's a concept. Haven't raised any money yet, haven't gotten investors yet, haven't even put a business plan together yet. It's a concept, and from the concept, we move forward, we do research, we see if it's feasible. If we find through, uh, Matt, if he talks to a few schools, they say, what the hell is Correa talking about? We want to do. We wanna do our own thing. It's like, you know, if we find that, that that's the general opinion, fine, go do your own thing. We'll see how that's working for you when it comes renewal time. And, um, no, seriously, it is what it is, man. We're holding people accountable now, hopefully in a way that we haven't in the last twenty years. Just a concept at this point.
Yeah.
So-
In response to your four bullet points, real quick, so if you're saying that they haven't had success at the state level yet, why would this be successful at the state level at this time, too? This is a hundred percent, we are the, and, and to tell a school that we're having a PEC math training, like, I, I'm sorry, it's just, I, I honestly don't feel comfortable going out and telling school leaders that we're hosting math training for them. I think it's, I think it's overstepping. To me, it's, it's very much overstepping our place. Um, if you, if we host a math training, I'm a, I don't, I was gonna say I'm a play devil, this isn't even devil's advocate. I think there's a couple of different things, like, either schools are gonna be like, are you kidding me? PEC's hosting a math training for us? Like, what? Number one, it is weird. Number two, I would feel like I have to come, and if I don't follow that, are you not gonna renew me? Are you not gonna? Exactly, like, and then if I don't have math scores, they're gonna say, oh, you didn't come to our symposium, so that's, like, now we don't like you, or, it just, to me, like, it's, it's a, it's a little too much into the weeds with schools. And I don't wanna get to the place where we're telling schools how to manage their, how they run their math program. And it just can cross that line just a little bit too much for me. I know you're saying it's an opportunity, no one has to come. But if only ten schools are doing it, and we're using two percent money from fifty-nine schools, I don't think that's an appropriate use of two percent money. So I do think it needs to be something that's inclusive of every school, and I think it'd be very difficult for it to be inclusive of every school in a meaningful way, because, as you said, maybe the state has been doing these trainings for years, and if you don't think they've shown success, we're not gonna do something magical and different with this that they haven't been trying to do at the state level for years, then.
PEC training, we're not doing the training. Pretend, if this isn't, we're hosting something the way somebody hosts a party. It's like, um, I'm not gonna say the college that's involved in this, 'cause there's the RFP thing, but let's say it was a Harvard program, and hold on one second.
Who's coming? CSD?
No, it's, um-
So us? We're gonna determine who's the adequate math presenter?
We are, well, it, it, conceptually, it's gonna be the same people that did the program at NMSA, a lot of that's gonna depend on procurement and all the rest of it. But it's, um, it's- No, but I'm answering what Becca's saying, because we're not, we are, to host something and to teach something are two completely different things. We are simply inviting math teachers at our fifty-eight schools to come and take advantage of this if they want to. They're not, there's no, um, they, they don't have to.
I'm, I'm a moment in the sun here. So, so, thank you. Because my, um, my feeling is, this should be used in a broader sense, in being able to offer support wherever schools feel they need the support. And I think that's a better use of the, of the money. Because for some schools, it could be math, for some schools, it could be their EL students, it, you know, it, it can vary. And that we set up a mechanism where we can offer that support to the schools, be it we're going to send them for professional development, or they say, hey, you know, we could, you know, we could use someone to come in and do this, that's, that's fine. But I struggle with a, just, and I, I wholeheartedly agree that our math scores are not good. I recognize that, everyone recognizes that, but I don't think someone does have the silver bullet, I don't. And, um, I don't think that program in New Hampshire is necessarily the cure-all for every school. It worked for a school very successfully, but they did their due diligence to find that program and say, hey, this is a good program, we're gonna send our staff there. We're saying, hey, we're gonna bring these people here, and this, and I'm going to say, I'm not gonna support something to say, well, only five schools chose to show up for it. That's not good use of, of, because this is the school's money, and we're supposed to be here in support of the schools. And I do believe they do need an uplift, I do. But I think it has to be very buried in what that support looks like, based on groupings of schools. I mean, we could take a, a number of schools that have similar concerns, and, and say, okay, what can we do to help you? And offer that support, be it professionally, you know, be it professional development at the school, or be it sending them somewhere else. You know, bringing someone into, uh, you know, five schools, that they can work it into their schedule, and they're, they're going to do it. Because I think it als, it is also challenging when schools are asked to send, math is in the tanks, well, we're gonna take their math teacher out of the classroom for two days. You know, so that's also a, a concern. Um, I believe NMSA went in the summer, when they were off. But with the varied schedules of schools, not everyone is off at the same time. Um, so, you know, I have a, I have a broader view of, of how we should be offering supports. And it's broader, but it's also more local, in terms of, I think we need to reach out to the schools to see what they need, and to figure out how we can do that, as opposed to saying, you need help with math, and this is, this is, this is how it's gonna happen. Um, and I do agree that schools might very well say, well, if we don't show up, that's, they're gonna be communicating that to us at renewal, that's like, oh, you didn't even come to the math symposium and look at your math scores. And I don't even want that to be, um, in the back of anyone's mind, that, um, that was a consideration. And they're, even if it's not verbalized, they're gonna be, they're gonna be thinking it. So, um, I think it needs way more fleshing out. Uh, Commissioner Taylor, and then Missy.
So, uh, three years ago, when I first came on the commission, we had no accountability, or no accounting, or no knowledge of what money, how much that two percent was, where it went, all that kinda stuff. So the fact that we're able to sit here and talk about how much two percent we can spend, and how we can use it for the benefit of our, our schools, we're, this is the right direction. This is, this is awesome, this is a great discussion. How we do it, we can refine those, you know, we can refine those points over time. I have a tendency to believe that, um, in, in listening to both, both sides of this, my, my thought is that it does make more sense to let schools kind of choose their, where, where they're weakest, and where we feel like we really need to, to, to push in. You know, some of those schools, a, a math symposium, they wouldn't be able to take advantage, or, I mean, maybe so, but they don't need it as much. So their two per, they're part of their two percent is sort of, we could've used it, you know, we could've used it here. So I, I, uh, yeah. So I think that, that just the fact that we're having this discussion about how we can spend that two percent on our schools, that's awesome.
What about inviting this organization to our conference, or asking NMSA's math teachers to make a presentation at our conference about what they learned? And if you like that idea, I'll tell you whose real idea that was, and it wasn't mine.
Because at least there'd be feedback as to how helpful that was to other schools, if they went to it, and what did they get out of it? Um, because it, you know, in, instruction is so individualized to the classroom, people can be looking at something, and it, it looks great on paper, but it's like, there's no practical application for me in, in that. And I, I can, I can speak personally, that, um, you know, I was very fortunate that I worked in a district that truly allowed us a hundred percent flexibility in where we, you know, our professional development was our choice. I, you know, I'm gonna go here, this, you know, we had to have prior approval, but we got it, and we had very little that was, here, we're all, you know, everyone's showing up, and this is what we're gonna do. Because we got to, we had annual reviews, we were, you know, if there were any weaknesses that were, that became part of your development plan for the following year, and then you found the professional development that helped to, you know, hone in on that. And that's, to me, that's what makes the best teacher, is taking a look at what you need, and also, yes, looking holistically at the school in terms of development of curriculum, but, uh, I think venues like your conference and the Charter School Conference that offers just multiple opportunities for, you know, development, is truly the best options for people, because they, you know, they can pick and choose, and come in and go out. They get a little bit here, they get a little bit there, and it's also what happens after those. Someone went to that, that session, and it's like, wow, I got this out of that. And it's, it's that conversation that helps lift everyone up during it and after it. And schools then can say, you know what? We had a lot of teachers that got a lot out of this session at the conference, so maybe we should bring someone into the school to be talking about it. Um, I think we need to, sorry, I think we need to be engaged as well, to some extent, with, um, maybe the colleges and teacher prep, and it's like, you know, what can, you know, what can we all do to help, you know, move, move this on? Because I think there's always, there's always that disconnect, and it's like, where, you know, where can we help, you know? When you went off to college, you know, what was, what was missing? And, um, so I think there's, there's a lot that goes into, um, the, how, how can we help, and who are all the stakeholders that we need? You know, first and foremost, it's our schools. You know, what do they feel they need? And then, once we find out what they, what they feel they need, then we, then we have a better idea of, well, where do we go to help? And what stakeholders do we then have to bring in, so that we can, um, move this forward? Commissioner Creo?
Uh, one, I like Missy's idea. Two, uh, Mike, even though you're not sitting here, uh, hey, Mike, I'm sorry, hey, Commissioner Taylor, it's a great problem to have, um, having a budget to be able to really support schools the way they wanna be supported. I think that's a great idea. Um, there, uh, the idea of reaching out right now to our colleges and our teacher prep, I say ix-nay on that. Only, it just, the reason I say that, and is, they're the ones that right now are giving people EDs to go in classrooms where the people are completely unprepared to teach. So I, I know you're shaking your head, I have zero confidence right now in most ED programs at the university and, um, I, uh, levels in the country. Because they're part of, and there was a Harper's article about this from like, eight years ago, they are part of the problem in just making a money machine to turn out teachers that should never be in a classroom to begin with. Um, in terms of looking into things, and there is an end run here, in terms of looking into things, in the course of what I've been pursuing these last couple of months, and uh, and the next couple of months, I have talked to this, a number of the schools in my district, uh, and they have really loved the idea, because they too recognize that statewide, we're in the cellar in this particular subject. And the only thing that makes me reticent relative to having a school initially choose something, is they may not choose this, but we can see this from their proficiency scores and everything else. You might wanna do this over here, but you're, you're not just doing badly over here, you're failing over here. So this is, and then, so, there's that point. The other is, I really want, if it's possible, sometime, um, to just step away from the idea that we're making anybody do anything. Everything's optional. This is just a concept, to see whether or not this is something we wanna float. So two ideas that I have now, as a result of, I think, a very vibrant discussion, are bringing, um, two maybe of the instructors from NMSA over here for a presentation, uh, maybe some Thursday morning, to tell us. Tell us about this, what, what she went through, and tell us how it's affected the way you're teaching, and tell us, show us, tell us about some of your results. I mean, that could be just for us to get an idea, um, of it, that's a possibility. Um, I love, uh, I like the idea of schools determining what they need, and us setting up some sort of a program, developing a program, and what I wrote, developing a program for a menu of offerings based on schools' individual needs. And, um, so, I mean, that can still happen, okay? Um, I still love the idea of a math symposium sponsored by PEC, run by experts, not part of PED, because I'm sorry, I don't, you know, it is what it is, and New Mexico has failed long enough in math, you don't go back to the same people that are, you know, overseeing the program that's consistently failing. And, um, so, but I'd like it, and I agree, it needs to be flushed out more, a lot more. I'm bringing this up today, not to do all the flushing, but to, um, to just, like, get a sense of things. Um, who doesn't want our schools to do, even, I mean, if all of our schools in the next three years, as a result of some program we, that we initiated, were in, increasing their math proficiency scores by an average of five points? That's huge. That's huge. I guess, do we wanna flush more? Do we wanna have now CSD look into this more? Find out who is offering this, find out who NMSA used, you know, um-
I'm gonna say for me, I don't wanna focus just on one program, one offering. That's where I truly struggle, that, um, because I, if you're, if you're saying, hey, NMSA sent their stu, their staff to this, this math symposium, well, what's to say that some other school didn't also send their staff to a symposium, and they had good results as well? So I don't, I don't think that program is the answer to it all. So I do not prefer to focus just on a program. I recognize the fact that they found, they researched, and they found a program that was appropriate for their school, and yes, it did work for them. But I, but that's why we're saying, schools need to have those options, because there could be a program that works better for their school, for their needs. And not, it's, we're trying to say, we're gonna fit this square block into a round peg.
I agree. I agree. But I want the focus to be-
That's where I struggled with-
I agree, but I want the focus initially to be on math. I don't wanna cast the net so wide, that all of a sudden, we find ourselves basically just swimming into nowhere, and not accomplishing anything. So I, yes, um, not that one program, um, but no, not casting a wider net, to me, focused on math.
It, it really is, uh, their money, though, right? So they should be able to make those choices. So that, I mean, I, I love the idea of, of being able to offer both, but I think we just, you know, we, we don't have endless funds, so we need to, we need to really let them sort of be involved in that discussion as far as what, what they want.
I mean, if you've got a school that is rocking it in math, and we do have some schools that do, then why can't they choose something else that they feel they need support in? Because-
Yeah, they don't have to come.
No, see, and I'm not talking about, see, you're still envisioning, I'm not envisioning a event, I'm envisioning some kind of support for the schools, not an event. Because I, I think it, it, it could potentially be a significant misuse of money, because we'll have six schools that show up. It may be great for those six schools, but it was a lot of money, and as Mike said, it's their money, and why can't, so if it's their money, and they say, hey, I found this math program that really works, that I think would work great, and we've got three or four schools that have a similar concern, why can't we say, well, we're gonna support bringing in someone, or a professional development day, you can- You can go or we'll bring someone in for these schools where this program, they've done the research, they're saying it's working. These other 10 schools say, this is what would really work best for us with the model that we're using. So yes, we'll support you on that. It doesn't have to be an event. It has to be us supporting the, and lifting up the schools. And that, to me, that's what's important. And what, that's where the choice comes in. Alan, do you want to say something?
I apologize, I'm just coming in. And if we've already belabored, are we close to the end of this conversation? I don't want to, okay. Okay, gotcha. I, I love the idea of having like conferences. I think they're really good for connection, for relationship building. They're real lousy to see changes, I think, in, in the classroom setting. I think they really are. They're, I mean, I, I just think about this every time we've, we tried to do like, like an awesome charter school conference, like in 2019. I mean, we spent so much time on that. Missy, I don't even know how much time we spent just getting the brochure different than what it was the year before. Those are the things, the charter school conference. It's good for relationships. It's good for getting training for, to check the boxes. It's just really hard to see like what dial got turned up when you're just acknowledging somebody sat in a room for a bit and they got some good ideas. And 10% of those people are going to implement those ideas. It's just, it's just hard, but it's the human, it's the human nature, I think, involved in, in what we do here. I really love the idea though, to like, it's a, my mind would be like, it's a great, it's a great primer. Let's prime the pumps around, this is going to be the year of, you know, us digging into math. Because that's what you can do in a, in a symposium. You can like, this is, this is what we're going to do. Setting vision, setting tone from the top, that's what our role is as a PEC. And then I think we do probably need that multi-pronged approach of supports going into schools where they do have, and this is where I'm not, where I know I wasn't here for this, but having a menu of offerings that schools can get direct support from experts locally as well as nationally or internationally around how to implement strong math processes that are going to be this year and likely, as we know, continuing into next year. So it'd probably be a commitment that the PEC, if we wanted to do this, we probably would have to think about what would look, what it would look like July 1st also, after this fiscal year closes out. Because it would be really bad to have an episodic moment. We get everyone excited and then we're not doing anything next year when schools are already planning right now for next year. And spring budget workshops next month. So there, a lot of things are going to be, the proof's in the pudding already for a lot of them. And so I would say, I would, I'd be a big proponent of like using some of our funding that is the 2% from schools for like a math symposium to kind of kick off things. We do probably have to make sure that we're getting a lot of, a lot of buy-in from the schools to see that this is something they want to do. Because we don't want to have six schools show up. We want to have all of them show up. We want to have districts show up. We want to have district, oh, no. Okay, got it. We want to have, we want to invite special guests in that might want to learn some things, if that's okay. But anyhow, I think that I'm all about it. But also I think that the reality is that a lot of the work, if we want to see things change, Commissioner Creo, at the school level, it has to probably be more intimate of a, of a, of a play from us.
Best professional development that I ever participated in was those where oftentimes we might go somewhere and smaller groups, you've got the general concepts, excuse me. But then it was, it was that multi-pronged. You went back to your school, you did some implementation, and then there was either smaller cohorts that you were with, that you talked about, this is, this is what I did. Or you actually had peer coaching with it. You know, that's the greatest opportunity. Someone comes in and they say, this is what I, this is what I saw in terms of, you know, you tell the person, this is what I'm trying to implement. This is what I saw you do. And there's that, that feedback to see whether this is actually working or not. It's not just going off somewhere and sitting there. And most people are on their phones while the people are talking and doing whatever. But they're intimate and they really are, people have that buy-in because they've got that connection actually to their classroom. And you develop those personal relationships with those people. And you, and you're providing that feedback from that so that it's not just a day. It, it is, you know, it is, it is a commitment. You know, we're, we're committing ourselves to supporting you in math for this year and getting schools to have that, that buy-in. And to me, you know, that's the only value in professional development is if you can come back, you can try to implement it, but get the feedback as to whether you are implementing it as intended. And that's not just test scores. It, it's not. It goes way beyond test scores.
Then I would modify, I mean, this is a great, to me, discussion we're having. Because I like what, I think is something that you just said, Alan, about this is the year of the, you know, and maybe this is. And I still think the idea, whether it's the college in New Hampshire or whether it's any, whoever it is, coming here and having something that we sponsor that we don't do and that other people can opt into. And obviously, if it's six people, we find out, you know, even, and obviously, I wrote down a survey just to find out initially if people are even interested. And if no one's interested, no, I'm not going to spend any time on this. But they might find, I think we will find that they are very interested in the overall idea of we are committing a lot of the money that we take in to support that you want for your school. And if we find that, you know, maybe there's six schools that all are asking for the same thing. And then maybe they're meeting at the, we're meeting all at the Hilton, you know, so they can get away and be in that small group. So I think that's one thing that needs to happen, survey-wise. And I don't know if this, if it's done by CSD and Karina. Are you hearing what I'm saying? Oh, I, well, I know you also, yeah. Yeah, a survey to find out, one, if people would be interested in coming to, sending their teacher to a math symposium that was specifically about getting out of the cellar in math. Because whether or not they tell us that's one of their preferences, there is a point at which we are in leadership's role, at our leadership role. And we can say, look, this, you're failing. We're, we're putting this on, would you attend? And if they say, no, this is not something that appeals to us, that's, it's a survey. I won't even, we won't even know the answers of the specific schools and what they say. So I can't hold a grudge.
Well, we're putting in the survey, you're failing?
No, we're not, but no, we're not. Okay. And then, but also the idea of, and I can't, no. And I can't imagine somebody saying no to, the PEC wants to offer a series of, they just want to offer you the support you need where you need it. And are you interested in, in very laser-focused professional development on specific areas? Maybe in the elementary, it's just going to be reading intervention. Maybe at the higher levels, it's science, whatever it might be. But maybe it's two-pronged now in terms of the survey. Maybe it's, because I'm not going to give up on this whole math idea. And, but also concurrently, the idea of multiple, stuff going on. JT?
I think the hardest thing is, and Becca and I had this conversation off-site, yeah, that oftentimes at conferences, it's difficult to, to take, or even symposiums or events or whatever. It's oftentimes, while the things are great that you come back from, even conferences we've been to, they're great. But sometimes it's difficult to actually implement in practice once you get back to the classroom or wherever it might be. And so oftentimes, I think it's, it ends up being kind of like, oh, that was fun, but that was great. But now what?
I guess that's an argument for us not traveling anymore and going to conferences. We could boot in other big cities. No, I completely agree with you. Because sometimes you get a nugget. Sometimes out of all the different things, and this happened to me with the, the first grade immersion reading program in Santa Fe. It happened with what we called the, they're stealing my idea now. They're calling it like an intake center for kids who only speak one language. And, you know, and I, I learned about this when we were in, not Houston, when we were in Nashville, something that was working in Sugarland, Texas. And it was amazing. And it's, you know, and Santa Fe's a small district. It's something we could totally do. And no. But now they're wanting, as they're reimagining things, wanting to do it. You're right though, you're absolutely right.
The, the other side to that is that oftentimes, change, to me, really only occurs if the person who is, the person has to want to do it. It's not like, you use your example, I think it's NMSA, right? That they,
They saw a problem, they wanted to correct it.
They wanted to correct it. They went through the initiative. And so it, that's all the initiative.
To find out if there's buy-in.
One, one of the, and I, I still am only supportive of possibly the menu of options. I think every year's the year of math. We look at, we're going to be looking at math scores and annual reports every year. So I don't know if we, like, that's where, for me, that's where we come in, is we send a letter that says, your math growth is really low this year. Like, that's what we do. I actually, but the more I think about it, the less I'm even, I'm, I'm still just struggling. I mean, ideally, we don't even take the whole 2%. Schools keep the money we don't need, right? Like, the only reason I'm even like entertaining it is because I'm trying to think of like, how can we spend 2% money? But then I'm even thinking about it even more so of like, I don't even know if we should be doing anything with any teacher ever. I feel like maybe we should do a menu of options for govern, like for governing boards and for the head administrators. Like, the teachers, I, like, once, I'm just worried about getting too far down the, the road to where we're having like this direct contact with people we should not be and having influence with people we should not be. But governing boards, like, if, I, I would rather spend millions of dollars having one-on-one training, like, not them coming to Zoom, poor Missy who has to like, you know, do these meetings, you guys who do these meetings. And I know, I mean, I'm sure every governing board member has great intentions. They care, but I don't know how focused they are during these mandatory trainings that they're just having to do and check off their list. Whereas Naomi coming to visit them at their school, visiting one of their board meetings, like, really getting intensive, like, I think that's where we're going to, we could influence the most change is by really having a relationship with governing boards and them having the communication with us. Because that's what actually our role is, is with us in the governing board. If we could affect a governing board to be looking at math scores every, all, at their meetings, if they're looking at academics, if they're looking at all these different pieces that maybe they're not, like, they're not intensively doing right now. Like, I just have, I mean, I've, I've had an opinion for a long time that if we could affect school boards and governing boards, I think education in Mexico would completely shift. If the adults in those leadership positions had the, the resources and information that they needed. So I would rather spend a ton of money on having the best, most incredible governing boards and head leaders, because I think we've talked about this a long time. Like, there's a very predictable equation. A good head administrator, good governing board equals good school. Like, most of the time, right? Like, it's very clear. So instead of getting into the weeds and how they're doing the actual instruction from the teachers to the students, I'm wondering if we can go up one step higher and influence and impact and get those people who are doing, you know, their, their trainings to check off the requirements, if we could provide additional support for them in like ways that maybe they find more meaningful as well. So the more I think about it, the more I'm like, I'm actually going away from instruction and teaching more and more from our role. Not saying they don't need it. I believe they need it. But I'm just like, I'm very concerned about the lines being crossed from where we are as authorizers, taking their money, and then how are we going to use it back on them? And that's where my mind keeps going. Is I'm wondering if like, we could have actually a bigger impact about creating a better relationship between us and the governing boards. I actually think if, I don't know how appropriate or inappropriate this would be, but we, I think we could host an event from PEC with governing boards and have them come talk to us and meet us. And like not, the charter schools, both the charter school conferences are great. But I don't really, like, there's a lot of people that are there that are extraneous to just the governing boards, right? Like, you meet a bunch of different people, but it's not like I get to actually build relationships with very many governing board members. And I wonder if that actually could create the relationship that we want, number one, right? For them to have like the trust and, and build a relationship between the PEC and governing boards to where they're like, oh, these are just normal people. We can just talk to them. We don't have to like, like, we'll get this letter and it's not going to be like them hammering on us. Like, they care about us, they just want us to know. I think that's actually a more tangible, like, something we could put our finger on and improve. And if we have resources and money to be able to do it, maybe that's a, a really good way to increase. Then we can see maybe that, maybe it's a trickle-down still. You know, like where, you know, the governing boards are, if they're more focused on these aspects, then the head administrator's more focused on those aspects. The head administrator provides the support for the teachers. They're focused on those aspects and it kind of trickles down in that way.
I love when we have these kinds of discussions. This is one I love being here the most. You're right, that's a brilliant idea. And, and I think the idea of convening governing boards and whether it's inviting governing boards to a, something where they're out of their element, but it's all happens in a, it's, I see an event, but it's for governing boards.
Event.
No, I, I said, and,
You know, that's the bottom,
and with good menu planning. Well, and then, because I remember when we were talking about, I learned so much from you. I really do, because you have a lot of experience in stuff and government and all sorts of things in education. I remember when we were discussing the school that took us four and a half hours in renewal in December. And they were here, and I remember from right where Mr. Brower's sitting, talking to the school leaders and to the tribal elders that came to show up. And I remember, and it's on record, I'm not trying to blow my own horn or whatever. I said, you failed them. I said, because you haven't held any of them accountable for the last 20 years, you know? And when you knew that this is the way the school was performing and you really didn't do anything about it. And we said that to the administrators and then to the, the tribal representatives because they're so involved in their communities and schools. You failed them. But so now, and I love your idea of bringing the boards together. And, you know, we can then say, this is our expectation of a board. And it's not just knowing the rules of, of audit and finance and everything else. You're an inspirational body that holds everyone else accountable. And what kind of school do you want to be? Because right, you know, and this is where you're in the cellar. Pretty much every school is in the cellar. We're willing to give you all the supports that you need. And maybe that then births the idea of, you know, the year of professional development where the 2% and PEC are 100% committed to giving you what you need. You choose from the menu. Does that sound good? Is there anyone that would be behind something like that?
Well, I mean, we already have a nugget of that with the contract that we have with PCS and M now for, for training for, for schools. And we're semi-implementing.
I think, I'm thinking of something different.
I know, I know, I know. I said, that's why I said there's a little bit of a nugget of that in terms of focusing the support to the governance council as opposed to, to the school. It's like, you need to see what, and what our role is, but what your role is. I think that, I think to some extent, that survey of what schools need could inform governance councils. It's like, look at, you know, this is what schools are identifying their needs are. These are the schools you're supposed to be supporting. And there's, there's these, you know, gaps that schools are seeing. So somewhere, someone's not, it's not operating as it should, you know? And I know, I mean, I was at a governance council not that long ago and they had never looked at data, ever.
Right. Well, and that's,
You know, it's like, where do I find that?
Alan's going to be shocked that I'm going to say this, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little kind of thinking of it as, I've told you that many times. No, but a little, No, but a little foo-foo from me, okay? So governing board members are volunteers. You, like, we talk about ourselves as volunteers. We still get some compensation. It'll, even if it's the teeny-tiniest bit, they get nothing. Like, they go to their board meetings, they don't get $45 for a Zoom meeting. They don't get, like, I mean, they get nothing. They're very, um, it's, it's a very much a thankless job, right? And what I'm wondering, what, one of the things that, when you have a job like that, like, not only do you maybe not think is it, it is as important as it is, right? Like, it is a massively important role. I don't think many board members, especially governing councils, because they're not elected, right? So they may not realize exactly the importance that they have, number one, and nobody celebrates them. Maybe you got, I'm, I know you treat them well, I know. But really, if you think about like, who's going and like inspiring them? And like, making them believe that what they're doing matters, right? Like, they do the trainings. I know that it's like educational, but like, if there was like a day of foo-foo celebration of like, we just value your leadership in the schools and then incorporate like, um, those meaningful pieces into that in like a way that's outside of their mandatory required trainings. But like, here's these, like, this is what an exemplary board looks like. These are the minimum things you have to do, right? That's like what the trainings are. But here's what like, a, a really high-quality, high-functioning board looks like. Here's what it operates, right? Like, have a mock board meeting, right? Where they like can see what this board looks like when they're running a, when they're managing this like in-depth meeting with academics. And they look at the financials. They, they're questioning the head leader. They are supporting the, right, they're like, have them do like something that's a little bit out of the ordinary for training, but also it be like a celebration of their role. Um, because I don't think they ever, I don't think they get the opportunity to do that. Other than maybe when they go to like their school celebrations, maybe they get recognized like, oh, we have board members here, thanks. You know, like, but generally, they're getting yelled at by parents. That's the only time board members really get to interact with folks is like, when someone has a problem. Just like most, like, most people in leadership, right? You only really get to deal with the negative things. So if we can bring in those positive things, but then intertwine like board excellence, but in like the philosophical way, like the foo-foo way of it. Like, because people just need to be inspired sometimes, too. That like what they do matters. It does make an impact. And if there's like, I know there's research behind it of like the efficacy of a board and how that leads to academic outcomes for students, there's a correlation. So if we can like have them recognize that in like a celebratory way, that's fun for them.
I was gonna say buy-in lunch.
Yeah. Can I just say? Yes, that's what I mean.
I wish, I wish you guys would come to the trainings. I really wish you guys would come to some of my trainings, just saying.
Needs to be, um, we've had all this great discussion, right? None of it means anything if we don't do something. So, um, and it's on the agenda for tomorrow. It's under math symposium, but what we can do is we can direct CSD and maybe, or, we can, we can always direct CSD or we can ask P C S, charter schools, P C S and M. Always get those two letters mixed up, yes, and the C. Um, the idea of cert, of surveying, well, maybe this is the case where we can say, hey, we're offering this. Uh, we encourage you to attend. And we sweeten the pot by having it someplace, you know, nice. And they spend the day there and maybe even they spent the night before so they can wake up, have breakfast and go to their, you know, first meeting. And, um, but just something that's really, huh? Yeah, something that's really comprehensive for board members. And, um, because they don't get singled out for fun stuff like that, right? A few of them come to some of these seminar, these conferences. So I would say that for tomorrow, in terms of discussing it as an action, it would be proposing and then, uh, developing, you know, getting this going.
We can't, um, the most, the language specifically says math symposium. So we can't make a motion for the governance council. Because remember, you had the option to, to
Make it broader and I didn't.
Make it broader and you refused.
Number 12 does have discussion and possible action on budget expenditures. A, expenditures that can equitably benefit
Yeah, that, that it does, but, but the piece that he's talking about, we can't do it in that motion.
Number 12, you can't.
Yeah.
Patty just wanted to go.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm gonna offer a different solution. Because the idea of these boards, many times, are not gonna have, especially in the remoter areas, are not gonna be able to, to, to come for something. I'm just gonna offer the idea of a roadshow. That, that if, if we had something we could do, we could schedule with them and say, hey, we're gonna come to you. Or at least to an area, you know, so, so that we can show you some love, tell you that we appreciate you. And, and here's the things that we're, we're trying to encourage in boards. And, 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 and so, yeah, it's more complicated to do that. But I think if you really want to interface with, with many of the boards that you're talking about, and probably the most problematic ones, you're almost gonna have to go to them. Because I don't, I don't, I don't think they're gonna, uh, uh, and, and the other thing is, if you go to them, you can go to their whole board, where they're likely to send a representative to come. If, if they do anything, one person can come. Well, that's not what we want to do. What we want to do is really encourage the whole board, because the whole board is what's, what is, um, where we're gonna make our difference. Thank you.
I mean, when we did the rollout of the new performance framework a while ago, that's what we did. We went on a roadshow and brought it to, we went regionally so that even, not just boards, but schools, they could have multiple representatives from the school to be able to be there. But there has to be the buy-in. I'm also gonna say this, because, um, there has to be buy-in from the commission that they're gonna be willing to, to go there as well. Because I've been the one that's been worried that we weren't even gonna have enough people for a community input hearing because we couldn't get commissioners to come to Las Cruces. So, you know, I, and I, you know, I own the fact I have little tolerance for people that don't want to travel. Because, you know, I don't, I, you know, but there has to, you know, this is a statewide commission. And if we're saying that, you know, we're gonna come, it's not just going to be the commissioner from that district. It's the commission that's, that's buying into this as well.
At, at least a few people. I mean, the whole commission probably not gonna make
I'm not saying all 10 of it have to be there. But there has to be a recognition that it's, you know, because that's how we show our buy-in to the governance council that, you know, people were willing to extend themselves to show that, you know, they do have that interest. I mean, Matt does often. They do the, the regional meetings, most of the time when I'm up here. So, but, I mean, I do appreciate the fact that he does that. And if I'm home, I mean, I do attend. Um, because there, it's, it's that moment where every, you know, because the schools think, oh, there's gonna be important stuff talked about there, so I'm gonna go. And I do think it, it shows a level of commitment to those, because, yeah. All those board members, 99.9% of them were, are working somewhere. So for us to hold something in the evening for them so that we've accommodated them as much as we can, I think that shows, um, our honoring them, uh, and their, and their commitment. Because you're right, it's, you know, it is an absolute thankless job. I mean, how often do we get an email from a school or a parent saying, thanks, I really appreciated what you did? You know? I get them occasionally. I do, I do. But the number of emails from, you know, a concerned parent that, you know, I have no effect on, that's, that's what we're getting.
Well, um, it's, sure, I think, um, it's an interesting idea. Um, but I like the idea of an event. Well, and there's reasons I do. I mean, I'm not just, what?
You want
I want, because we're having, it's like if you bring all of the board members from all over the state together.
You're not going to get that.
I know you're not gonna get all of them. Maybe you get three, uh, members, um, or even two of some of these boards. But you bring them all together and there's something special about that. You have the mixer of the evening, and then from eight in the morning until maybe four in the afternoon, people are actually working on all the stuff that we want them to work on, and then they go home. So maybe people are missing, you know, a day, those people that are still working are missing a day of work. Getting enough advance notice, you know, to do so. If they don't want to come, they don't have to come. They send the two people who are retired that can come. Um, I think for me personally, it's challenging and I have no trouble traveling. You know that.
Why, when I said Las Cruces, you said we're not going there.
When did I?
Just before.
Now, I mean, you know, but I might face horses as things, but I, I'll drive wherever I need to drive, you know? And, um, and I, because it's New Mexico. Who doesn't love driving around New Mexico? And, um, but to have several of those, for us, that's also an enormous time commitment. Um, and then you're diluting the pool. There, there's something in the power of bringing everybody together. It's, it's, uh, you know, I gotta tell you, it's like when we, when you, uh, everyone here knows I work with New York Life. It's no secret and publicly. But when everyone comes to, comes together, either twice a year in Albuquerque or once a year in, they call it for council or whatever it might be, it's really powerful to have everybody together. Um, learning from each other, meeting people that they've never even met before, that they, you know, see their name on emails and stuff. There's just power in that. And, and it's not just that I want to have an event and give people a good meal, you know, and a glass of wine. I want to do that, too, but I want to bring people together.
Why don't we just, why don't we just create a session for governing board members at the Charter School Conference in June?
That's a
May I speak to that?
Like a meet and greet?
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, well, I guess I got one basic question. Is there, like, are there training hours offered?
Yes.
Because that's the cookie that entices governing board members up is, oh, I'm gonna get some hours out of it. So you're absolutely right, offering it, because it is a, it is a challenge just to invite people up from my district and ask those folks. Because many, many that serve on the GC are not retired. So asking them to come up for an event and they're not getting any hours out of it. There aren't many that are gonna come up because they just don't have that kind of time. But they do keep it in their calendar to go to one of these two events because they know they're, they're going to get hours out of it. So they're kind of a captive audience already there. Most of them are there. And then, yes, we can have a reception or something like that for them there. Um, but I, unless we're offering training hours, there's less likelihood that, um, folks are going to, as much as they may applaud what we're trying to do, they're looking at family, business, what am I going to, you know, spend my time with? And am I gonna drive all the way there to have a cocktail with these folks?
Oh, and I would say, um, that's nice. Um, so we've gone from this idea that I thought Beck, and I really love Becca's idea. Um, a session, I don't, a session celebrating boards? No, the idea that I heard from Becca was like a day-long thing where we're training board. Yes, they're definitely gonna get, um, credits or whatever they need. But more of a day-long thing, or maybe it's even, no, a day-long thing with a mixer of the night before. Make it a really special thing. And, um, where we're teaching boards how to be boards and actually teaching them how to realize the power that they don't even know they have. They're serving because somebody asked them to and they're serving to take care, to monitor the nuts and the bolts. Because that's a lot of what accreditation is. But it's not about inspiring your school leaders. It's not about making sure you check this so you can raise the bar for everybody. So I gotta say, for me personally, if this becomes more milquetoast, I am so not on board, I can't even tell you.
Oh, I think we could do everything that you're talking about at the Charter School Conference. But why not? Why, why can't you have a whole day of sessions dedicated to board members? I'm, I'm talking about even the one we have in, right?
I like the regional idea. I do like the idea of going regionally. Because I also think like, so I think, this is, this is where I think the difference is between a training that they're normally going to versus what I would, what I'm envisioning is particularly in person. Because online, they're not connecting with each other. And that's what we talked about, like, the benefit of a conference is mostly to have people connecting. Like, it really is. And so I actually love the idea of regionally, so it's not a burden on the boards. It's on us, and I think that's true. We should all, we should try to commit to going to every single one of them. Like, if this is our D idea, right? Like, we should commit to going to them. But I think, I, I like the idea of doing something at the Charter School Conference in addition to like a regional thing where we do what you're talking about. Where, and, and that way they can meet each other, right? Like, which, I mean, we don't have to go, I just tell in case, KT, we don't have to go to the southeast. So that's like one region that, we don't have to go there necessarily. But like, we do have a southwest region one, and then they meet each other, right? And maybe they already know each other. I don't, you know, maybe they do. But that way, if they have issues, they can call each other. They can, like, hey, this, this family just came from your school to my school. Now they're complaining what's going on, or, you know, like, this head leader just applied at our school. What was your opinion? And like, if they can connect with each other in a way that's not online during a mandatory training, like, I actually don't like the idea of this being a training points towards them. Like, I think that's what Missy's role is. That's what Matt's organization does. That's not what I think we do. And that's not what I'm proposing we do, is give them training credits. Like, it really is, like, I'm envisioning it being something different. But I love the idea of doing like a little taste of it at the conference in June with, while they're there. And then maybe they get a good idea of like, oh, like, I got to go meet, like, 10 of the, all, all 10 commissioners were there and I got to meet them all and like chat with them and talk with them. And like, now they're gonna come to my community? Maybe they'll, they'll come meet us again, right? If they meet us in, in Tamaya, or, no, wait, you're not doing Tamaya. They meet us in Albuquerque, right? They get to, like, they see us in that mixer. Maybe they go tell the rest of their board that didn't come. Like, hey, they're coming down to Silver City. Let's go meet them for an evening and like spend the day with them, like, do this work with them. And, because I think of it as more as like what Naomi is doing for us. Not the exact thing, but like this qualitative kind of like training. Not their, their, not that kind of training. Like, what Exactly, exactly. Actually, that's not a bad idea. And make Naomi come do the roadshow with us.
Well, so let me ask you a question. Um, I don't like the original idea. I just don't. So, um,
What's the original idea now?
No, the, or, the regional idea.
Oh, right, you don't?
No, I don't.
Well, I feel like the, I, I just
It's okay, I'm not done yet.
Difficult for people to drop there.
But you know what? They set priorities. They have a mixer. You take a day. You meet everybody and everybody comes. I have a question, and Missy would probably know the answer to this. Or, uh, Matt might know the answer, or Karina might know the answer. We probably have a minimum of 294. I did 58 times five. Maybe I should have done 57 times five. Um, a minimum of that number, 285 plus board members for state charters in New Mexico. How many of them came to PCS and M or to the CSD conference? Out of 200, let's say 85. Roughly how many board members came?
So first of all, there aren't just state-authorized charter schools. And I didn't calculate that number, like, how many. I would give that to you in your annual report that I'll give you in June or July. But for our conference that we had in July, you know, I don't specify between state and district, just board members. But not
No, but now we have, if we have such and such a number of state-authorized charter schools, and if I put that number at 57, and then we have an average of
I know what you're asking. I'm just saying, I don't, I, I, I count all of the schools.
Do you have, or did somebody there have a rough idea of how many board members attend?
Yes, and we provided that number, but it's not at my fingertips. I could get that to you later, Commissioner Carrillo, um, because we did take those counts.
More than 30?
When it's total board, it's not
Right, and so we would have to do the disaggregation to tell you about state authorized.
So with governance council members, they didn't make a distinction between whether you're serving on a state authorized or a district authorized. They just have a total number of board members, but it's not, we don't know how many.
Because I'd be curious, I would probably say, my guess is it wouldn't be that many, um, in terms of state Cause I'd be curious. I would probably say, my guess is it wouldn't be that many, um, in terms of state. I don't care. I do care about the districts, but I don't care about the districts in this, in, uh, in this regard. Right now, talking about state charter schools and doing what's best for our governance councils.
I mean, going, going to those conferences. I see a lot of governance council members that, that I know of, and I know I don't know all of the governance council members in all the schools, because there, you know, there's transitions. But I, of the ones I know, I see them at those conferences. But I also know that by and large, the ones that aren't coming up are because they can't get away from work. They can't, you know, they can't get away from their family because it's not just a, I can drive up. They're not driving up for four hours, spending six hours at something and then driving back four hours. I mean, so it's not just, it's not just a day. And, um, it is a, yes, they're, they've committed themselves to that school. They didn't commit themselves to having to travel all over the state to get what they need. They didn't. Um, and I know there's a lot online to, to try to accommodate that. But to say that, oh, they didn't, they weren't committed enough to come up to either one of those conferences. That's, that's a false statement because they are committed, but we have to recognize their time and, and honor that, and honor that time. They just don't, um, you know, they, they don't have that. So I, I, I see very few that serve, that don't really want to serve, but they do struggle with everything, you know, what this commitment means.
Okay. Um, the first thing is I would like to ask a question. And that is, is there training hours that are not specific in the requirements that we have?
No.
I mean, are.
There are all a lot of the top.
Electives.
No.
And the, and the. Maybe, okay. So here's what I'm going to say. Maybe this is, how, how important is this? And I'm going to say, w- 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 we gotta give them credit somehow for doing that. Yeah. With, with ours. Okay. Or whatever. I am a strong proponent for the regional ones. I think we are the state party. We're the ones that bought into traveling, not them. So my personal opinion is, yes, I think we should have some, there should be, uh, at both conferences, a uh, happy hour, whatever, that's for, um, for board members to, to really celebrate them. But I really strongly feel like if we really feel like what we're going to do is going to add value to those board members. Then we gotta put our money where the mouth is and ta- take ourselves out to those, at least in a couple areas. Where we get them close enough to where they can go drive over there. We don't have to necessarily pay for a hotel room for them. We can just make it so it's convenient enough to where they can go. And then really make it worth their while in a dinner, a, uh, but really just I, I, I don't know that you can get them to do the six hour training. I, I personally am really excited about the idea of encouraging the board members. And, and if I, if I'll drive across, uh, you know, but I can't drive to every school. That would be impossible. But could we get to, could we take some effort to find a pocket where we can get most of the people there? I think we could do that. And, and I, I think the encouragement factor is probably the biggest thing we can do is to give them that understanding that their job is stinking really important. And if, and if they do their job well, their schools will do well. Because I think most of them take this volunteer job because somebody's hounded up to do it because they desperately need somebody. And, and they, they are, okay, I'm philanthropic enough to say, I'm going to do, donate my time to do that. You start talking about, uh, a whole day of driving and stuff. They, that's going to be outside of their wheelhouse. Because most of them are, are, are only going to be able to commit a, a small amount of time to devote to this thing they've agreed to do. So we gotta make it worth their while to, to do something else. I really want to encourage those board. I, I feel like after just the year that I've been here. What I have seen in the problem schools is problem boards. And, and so if I could, if, if I can do anything to encourage the board members, I'm all about that. Thank you.
Um, a couple of things. Um, no one's asking anybody to drive all over the state in terms of board members. We drive all over the state. It's what we do. Do you think that having the conference at Tamaya as opposed to the Sheraton was part and parcel for so many people wanting to come? It's an incredibly beautiful resort in the, you know, in New Mexico. It's a great way. There, it's a, it's a great special place to get away. I mean, that's part of the enticement. I like the idea of the elective of them getting some sort of credit. I know there's not, but I like the, maybe we give them a gold star. I don't know. But it's just like, I just liked the idea of there being some like extra credit or something for having, you know, attended this. But, um, I think you make, when you make something special, um, people are going to feel special uh, for attending and bringing everybody together. Um, so I, as I, um, kind of said to Tim a second ago off, uh, to the side. It's like, I, I'm just watching an idea that was started with uh, a laser focus on wanting to lift math scores. Move to, which I love it because it's a brilliant idea, I think, Becca, of focusing on boards lifting up their schools and realizing their own power to do so. Uh, with their administrator and then for the administrator, the staff. Um, to now going around the state, now doing, having it be part of another conference. Now, all of a sudden, it's like for me personally, milquetoast, no desire whatsoever. Go on to what's next. Um, then it's been a great discussion.
So, and I'm going to say the six hours that they got of governance training, if that's what I'm, I'm just throwing out six hours. That's what got them to Tamaya, not Tamaya. I'm going to tell you that. Maybe, maybe head administrators and people like that, but the fact that they were, that the governance council members went to that, not because it was at Tamaya, but because they were getting governance councils training. That's the bottom line. And yes, it was lovely and it is a, you know, it is a magnificent setting. That was a perk, but I'm also going to tell you, there are a lot of people from down by me that couldn't, that could not go. Because they are, we are asking them to travel all over the state. If we're asking them to come to something, however pretty it is, you're asking the where the bulk of the schools are, which is in Albuquerque. They don't have, they can go for the day because they live there. But you're asking the people in the rest of the state, you have to give up two days of work to be able to benefit from this. That's what we're saying. That for the people in Santa Fe and Albuquerque, everything happens here. And you don't have, you really don't have to sacrifice a lot. You can, you know, take a long lunch and, and pop in here. You can do an hour here. You can come in for dinner. You can come in for the, um, the, the social. Isn't that great? But for the people who don't live on this I-25 corridor, the rest of you, you have to, you're going to have to travel because you're not committed enough to do this. And that's what you said was you're not, you did.
You say you're not committed enough.
Said if they're not committed enough, they're, they need to, you know, they need to come, otherwise they're not committed enough.
I say a lot of explosive things, but I would never say that.
But, you know, but they hear that. And.
I just think it's.
We are asking them, we are, we're saying it's important for us. And most of us, let's be honest, most of us live in Albuquerque and Santa Fe. So we're keeping it here in Santa Fe and Albuquerque. And the rest of you, you just have to travel, you know? That's, that's the reality of it. Okay. Yeah. We, we are way off. Cause none of us, we can parse this into a little bit on the. But this was not the agenda item, but we kind of blended into what we're going to do. Here that we're, you know. Matt.
I'm not sure where you are at on your larger. But I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of great pieces of the discussion. I do want to underline one thing that we are having internal conversations is that, that, um, the idea that the hours are the thing that they come for, for is true. It's also something we need to figure, we have to crack the code to get away from that. Um, i- i- I am always shocked at the number of board members that go to the national alliance conference. I mean, New Mexico's representing at that conference, even when it's in DC. It's a ton of time. Uh, DC might be a little more fun than Albuquerque. Might have, might have a little, little more things you can do outside, outside of that. You know, they go for other reasons that we haven't quite decoded here. And I think our whole sector has relied on, well, you'll get your hours. And when you're starting something, yeah, we should, it's the thing we know, right? But I think we have to get past that, um, during the debate around the school board training requirements. Um, uh, you know, the five hours for continuing board members. Joe Guillen from the School Boards Association said, yeah, it's not a problem. We have people that get 40, 60 hours. There, there is, there's a culture about going to those trainings that they find that to be really valuable that in a way that we, and I just say this collectively as, I mean, we have a big stake in this that I'm not saying we're failing at, but we're not getting to a point where it's just so good, it doesn't matter, you know? And so I, I just want to throw that out there that like not, not begrudging any idea of how like, hey, we get them in with these board training hours. But at the end of the day, we all do ruthless prioritization of our time with all these competing priorities. And like, it's gotta be good enough for that to rise to the top. And I, I don't know, School Boards Association, I mean, there's a golf tournament going on, like with the, we can figure the, like, if it's, if it's about the social, then let's give them the social. Um, so you just have like a committed partner that's like trying to figure this out too. And in the same way that at our conference, you know, we, we, we're going to make space for you. And we're, we're happy to collaborate on these ways. Like, let's talk about that in the June conference. We will certainly be applying to try and present. But if there are other kind of elements there, like we're game. Uh, just a couple of other things that I heard that I think were good. We have two convenings a year. It's a lot. It's about a week between the two of them. And so I, I think I heard some of the conversation moving to how do we take advantage of those two? Um, I, a third one that isn't really focused on something risks watering it down. And hey, bring on the competition. We're going to win. Okay? That's how I view it. Um, you know, if we want to compete with three or four events, that's fine. But there is risk associated with it. And when there's an in-person event, a, a few people have mentioned the convening power is what we're getting out of it. And so to dilute that would be, would might, might defeat all three or four events of like truly the power of convening folks in the state. So just throw that out there. Um, lots of good ideas and I'll just, I'll just, yeah, I'll end it there. We have some ideas. You know, so part of the evolution of that conversation was the fulcrum that you have like the, that, that, that holds the most power. And like the idea of rooting in, hey, we're seeing something in the data. We should focus on it. I think like should be really applauded. Um, what we have found though, over really over like 15 years in, in our organization is if there's one thing that casting that we're a membership work, we have to find things that dozens of our schools like. Otherwise it's not worth our time, you know? And getting into content is really hard. And if you go back to the charter school act and the elements that we actually have flexibility in, the pieces that they're expected to innovate in. They want to do their own thing. And so like the flip side of that, of, of that is like, well, what are the elements that like do apply to everybody? And we are currently going through, um, uh, now that we have some additional capacity with Valerie. And you get, you all know, we work closely with Wayne and today Sarah Chuleta. We are working on, uh, the human resource component. Uh, there, we have charter schools that have their own business manager. Um, we have charter schools that have, you know, some of those other positions, a federal programs coordinator at the very big ones. Almost none of them have a human resource officer. Um, and we're unsure of how much focus our schools are putting in some of the preventative aspects. Human resources surely means just kind of the staffing part. And that's a really small part of what we're talking about when you're, when you're running a governmental organization. Um, so we are, we're still kind of crafting what something like that would look like. We're reaching out to new contacts. I recently met a mediator who focuses solely on public school mediation between parents and schools, between employees and school leaders. This kind of stuff could be good one-off training, but I think per your conversation that having something where there's some actual service associated it with it might be good. And a review of personnel manuals, um, is something we're contemplating. Um, that, you know, we could either, that would be something that could be opened to everyone. Hey, we'll give you three hours of a review of your personnel manual. We're not rewriting this for you. But we will say that's out of date. You need a policy on this in here because it's all about mitigating risk and all about setting expectations between leadership and employees in a way where no one's surprised later on. This is a new arena for me, but one that for a long time has been out there as just kind of in, on the back burner. I don't think we're spending time on this the way we should. Um, if it's warranted to have a full-time HR department in a school district with 700 kids. And this is just one of the hats that one of our charter school leaders are wearing. Um, that kind of tells us what we need to know as far as the amount of focus that's put on there. So that's one thing. I think having a bank of hours for a review is, is that thing that actually provides service. We're probably going to do some PD around it, um, some professional development. I think we're, you know, to, again, to the earlier conversation. We don't want to use up a convening on something that we don't know, like, like hooks with people right now. And I think laying it out there that you have a bank of hours to use with some professionals that know, know what they're doing here would let us know, it's almost, it's a self-diagnosis just by raising your hand, saying, I want that. So that's one idea.
Are you talking about you, like there would be an R E C or something with a lot of different professionals and they would have an ability to do that? So the broad spectrum of ideas you just raised.
I, I think that the, the real proposal in here, and I am, I would propose that we did it. Um, we would, just because we're spending more time on this and we want to build out the portfolio. And we think that would be helpful for schools, would be okay if somebody else did as well. Um, but the, the real proposal here is a bank of X amount of hours for an experienced administrator to look over your personnel manual, personnel policies maybe as well.
I, and I, thanks for that because we did talk a little bit about having, you know, opportunities for whatever a school whatever, whatever a school needs in terms of banks of hours, because, um, I think especially in that area, schools hesitate because I think the cost is significantly higher. If they ask their legal counsel to do that review, so they're not reviewing those manuals and things like that. Because they're budgeting, you know, X amount. It's like, I can't budget that. This would, a, if, if we're helping to support that, it takes that off the plate. And it would be, I think, less money as well.
And Madam Chair, that's the exact point of it is less money and the, and I'll throw one thing, I'll just add one thing. Cause what you said is totally right, is that they normally create a policy when there's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, or they realize that their policy's out of date and now you're in that situation where you need to call your legal counsel.
So I, I hate to do this to you, but I've had several commissioners ask for a short break before we continue on. So let's, um, let's take a ten-minute break.
You take your break when you want it.
That's all right. It was only like a minute and a half, so. So besides, um, maybe an HR opportunity for schools, probably through the REC's maybe? Yeah, whatever, you know, I just like, you know. And I guess a lot of that could be more digital so that it wouldn't require, so that, you know, it's not requiring schools to have to go anywhere to do this, that they can digitally upload manuals and things like that. So, um, I appreciate that. So any other nuggets?
We do have a number of things we're working on, on the board training side that, you know, I'll throw out there as updates. We'll be doing these in coordination with Missy to make sure, you know, the elements fit into training requirements. But we are developing a, not sure how many hours, uh, course just for incoming board chairs. You know, starting to focus on the roles of the board. If you're the person who's chairing the finance committee, let's just have two or three meetings at night that gets you X hours that, that really get into how to run that piece of it. Um, and trying to do more targeted training in that way. Some more specific training on, uh, head administrator evaluations. These things that we, th- these things can look fifty different ways, you know? Working individually with folks and giving them some workshop time, like that can fit into governance responsibilities or I'm forgetting the name of that, but it, it fits into our current structure. Okay? I think.
Those are all changed now, Matt. They aren't, there's no governance responsibilities.
And it, and it does get to the, the kind of the conversations we've been having that like these kind of boot camps based on roles within the board, they might go past the five hours that are now in statute. And our, our aim is to make it as long as it's actually valuable for them. Sure, they'll get their hours, but if it ends up being eight and they really thought it helped them, then we're starting to find that winning formula of engagement that they're, they're actually getting more than just like meeting their hours. So, um, complaints process at a school is something that, that we want to work on. Again, these can all fit right into, um, uh, other spaces as well. So we're going to try and have a wider set of trainings that have some focus to them in conjunction with Missy, of course, who's been a really great partner of ours. We just think we're, it's, it's, it's the idea of turning the corner to come get your hours for finance to let's learn how to run a finance committee. And I don't think our trainings have been bad, but I think like, I do think we need a better like hook to set for folks and really outline like what they're getting from it. So I think that, that HR piece is something that would be important for schools. I do think that there are opportunities also in our business manager relationship. And this could be a training both for board members and for school leaders. Everybody wants an in-house, uh, business manager. But if you're going to manage a person one-to-one as an employee at your school, you better know a whole lot about financing the budget yourself to be able to manage somebody in that way. Our, um, our business, our contract business management firms are really great. They are huge service charter schools. They started in charters and now school districts use them all the time. And this is not an actual comment on the, uh, the entities themselves. But they're serving a lot of different organizations, so they have incentive, whether they're doing it or not, they have incentive to try and give everybody the same thing, to institutionalize what they're doing as an organization. Every school gets the same reports. That's not actually that true. We know that it's different, but do we know how to request the thing we want to make sure we get it? I think almost every business, business manager with the V Hill Group, K-12, um, Axiom, they work to try and, you know, fulfill requests. So I'm not saying that doesn't happen, but they certainly have an incentive to, for it to be less personalized. And so how do you find the middle ground there where you're getting the reports you need that actually speak to your board members? I, I, I run a five-person nonprofit with not a very complicated budget. We're two years into our finance committee meetings and I think we're only now really getting to that mix of the right report and training everybody on how to read the report. So there's real good oversight on what that looks like. It takes time and it is both of those things, getting the right report and training people on how to actually read those. So when they get them in their packet three days ahead of time, they can do a quick check, you know? If you're not on the finance committee. So I do think that like relationship between board, finance committee, leadership and businessman, oh, I'm covering up the line, business manager, that is something to explore here. And to Commissioner Carrillo's, um, ideas on, you know, how to use the two percent. We could go into the audit findings and find some themes in there, you know? And, and, and think about, let's just make sure we hit some of these because these are, these are things that, that we're missing right now. And, and laying down, we even had confusion on your performance framework from the school leader side. Oh, not on school, sorry, not on performance framework, on CSP. We wrote in one of the lowest bars for, uh, for financial, but a real one, which is no modified opinion on your audit. And there were a number of schools who said, oh, whoa, hey, come on, you know? And it's like, do you, are, are you, why do you think having an opinion that's saying we can't even make sense of these books is an okay thing for you? I think that was just actually a terminology thing, but it does, it, it does go to show that, that maybe it's just a space for us to, to help illuminate for folks. And I do think that is many elements of leadership, not just board, not just school leader, but bringing in that finance committee oversight and the business management. And I'll just reiterate again that, that, you know, it's not a critique on our business management firms. But the incentive is there. So how do we kind of figure that out? And then we have seen time and again, uh, folks who have business managers and really just kind of push it off to them to do all the budget stuff. You know, hey, do we have money for that? Maybe we should know that, you know, as a, as a larger leadership. So, yeah, those are some of the ideas.
So have you, um, also talked anything about, um, offering some support for how to, how to make a good decision in hiring a head administrator? And, you know, building a skillset out with the board members so that they, you know, they have an idea of what they should be asking, what they should be looking for, you know?
Offboarding and onboarding. That whole shift, which is, you know, ideally the last year and a half, but oftentimes the last six months of your current administrator and thinking about what's next there. We have so many boards that know it's coming within the next two or three years. It's just time to get started now. Um, and so yes, that's, that was on our list, but I, I didn't share that. But yeah, we're doing, that kind of focus on some of the board training is really where we want to head. So people who raise their hand, they have an interest for a reason. And so, so that's kind of where we're heading here this spring and summer on the training. And, you know, as I've mentioned before about working with Missy, you know, there's not enough people doing this at, at the right time. So if people are doubling up on it, that's all good. You know, these are, this is just our reflections after the last handful of years of doing governing council training under the new model that school boards will be under too now.
Oh, sorry.
So it's interesting in terms of onboarding, offboarding, and we're thinking about teaching boards how to hire an administrator, right? What about commissions and how to look for school leaders that are applying for a new school? And I think we do our due diligence, we've been to seminars, especially, I mean, that to me was one of the biggest pieces when I went to Oakland, was the idea of, um, I mean, are there things that we're missing sometimes? I don't have the answer to this, this, you know, I, how many schools have I approved? Not dozens, just a few. But making sure, how is it best to drill down when it's time for, when they come here finally in August, after the community input hearing, to see whether or not this is a group that's capable of, you know, operating in all subs, let alone a school?
I, I think you all do a pretty good job of that and, uh, the capacity interviews would show that. And really, particularly in the last four years, your application is a true filter for whether folks are ready or not. Commissioner Gibson, you may, you, I think were there when we shut down a school six months after it opened? Yeah. It was in your district.
The intended was the vote to hold the, hold the hearing. They didn't, they were shut down, you know, within the first couple of months of their opening. I mean, they finished the school year out, obviously, but yeah, they, they open, well, actually it happened twice. Because we, um, SA HQ, we closed after. We had to have a emergency meeting to make sure they didn't open for their second school year.
Yep.
Yeah.
That, that's a real part of our past here that I just don't think anybody gets through. And, and one thing I was thinking about, and I didn't raise it because I felt like the conversation was taking into, into consideration. If you remember the school in Los Alamos that gave it two or three tries? That to me was, I mean, they, they weren't ready, um, but they were committed. They were putting in the time and they weren't people who didn't have experience and education. I mean, they were, to me that, and, and, you know, Polaris, I think was the, was the school's name. Maybe it could have gotten there, you know? Like, I'm not saying that they wouldn't have been a good school, but, but especially in that first year to me. And, and I actually had somebody request, uh, make, ask me, and you can tell me if I need to go back and tell them I'm wrong. I said, I don't think the PEC, it, it, there is no bad judgment if you come back in year two. I mean, that just shows you're actually dedicated to doing this thing. Um, and that Polaris experience where they just didn't quite get to the, to the place where they got over the hump. That, I can't remember when that was.
Probably about four years.
Four?
Four, yeah.
I really think at that point, th- this has served as a, as a good filter. And if you look at the schools, it doesn't mean every school is going to be successful, but they are ready to operate, you know? And, and we, we had schools that weren't ready to operate eight, nine years ago.
No, I think we do a great job. I just didn't know if you had something that, you know, to add or whatever. What's interesting is the three schools that were kind of application finalists last year, none of them put in letters of intent for this year.
Yeah, and you know. Yeah, yeah, there are.
They put in a wise, but not the three, the three finalists.
Oh, no, no, none of the ones that came all the way to community input that, that then pulled after the community input hearings, none of them reapplied. Yeah, and I, I have to be honest, that happens, I think more often than not. That when a applicant, I don't know of an applicant that pulled their application late that ever came back. Well, that was before my time. But yeah, lately, it's like they, they just feel like the bubble was burst and they're not coming back. And I get it, there's a lot of time and energy that goes into that. So if you feel like you failed, I think they don't want to, you know, except that guy in, um, that was from Texas that tried opening in Columbus forever, you know? He was, he, he just wouldn't, he just wouldn't go away.
Well, and Madam Chair, if I may really quick, the, what you were doing with the notice of intent, I think is, is probably the next best thing you can do because you are bound by statute to actually review and go through the whole process with an application. And that school you just mentioned, I mean, we're all taking a trip down to Luna County for some, we all knew that that wasn't going to happen. And so at the very least, you're helping direct people that should somebody finish that application? Well, there's a better chance that it's of good quality.
The guy that was going to have the middle school kids physically build the school, yeah.
Um, I had one of the charter school lawyers on this kind of idea of a bank of experts, like an experienced HR administrator to help with personnel manuals, suggesting that there ought to be a bank of policies. And that, that for new schools, but also for a school that wants to look at something again, that has not necessarily gotten a stamp of approval by the PEC, but that's another idea. I didn't know if that, for the two percent.
We, we actually wrote that into our CSP grant. We have a lot of funding for it and we're getting started on it right now. So we will have that funded and paid for for the next five years with the idea being, at that point, we have a full slate of policies that we're really just updating each year based on new law and rule changes. At that point, that, it should be cooperatively invested in by our members if they find that it's good. So we, we, we are on that. And that's because that's been around for however many years and the dollars was always the shortfall in actually making it happen.
So I guess from our perspective, I know you've got money out of the CSP grant, but from our perspective, I guess I would just ask that as you're moving forward, we need, uh, you know, a dollar amount attached so that we would be able to see whether we can or cannot allocate. You know, I think it's something that is, you know, reasonable, but you know, what are we, what are we looking at? And also, are you, is the expectation that the build out, and I fully support the build out of board training, because we spent however long on that. Would that also come from part of the two percent? Or are you anticipating that coming solely from the CSP grant?
So you all could speed up development of those with two percent money.
Okay.
Right now we have our staff, um, we're busy. And so like, we probably, we probably wouldn't be able to really get those developed until this summer. If we could, if we had funding to bring in some of our common contractors that we use to help, like staff time's already budgeted for, but bringing in additional hands would, would take some money, but not much for the development. And we could figure out a way where if you help pay to develop it, we'll just make it free for this year, you know? And then, and then.
And maybe that's, maybe that's that further conversation, especially with like Naomi.
Yes.
To be able to, to do that, because I think she'd really be, you know, a, a, a true asset. So if we could work something out with her so that she would, uh, be a, a, a component of that. And I think that's something that we probably could at least get started and prime the pump with.
Yep.
With the two percent.
And Madam Chair, the, with just one reminder, and, and I'll try and get the executive committee in on a meeting here in the next month or so to talk about it. Our CSP grant does provide for technical assistance for authorizers. And we would love to be helping you all out. I know we're having a conversation about two percent money and how you have some, you have some extra opportunity with it. You, you could have even more if you allow us to, to help you with that work with Naomi via those federal grant funds. Um, and I, and I, I do think that work that you're doing with her really fits in. And, and I, I do think that work that you're doing with her really fits in what the intent of the CSP grant was. So I'm just offering that out there that, you know, let, let's have that conversation because I think, you know, Commissioner Creo mentioned, this isn't about spending money. This is about the opportunity you have with these resources. You can have more opportunity if you let us offset some of, some of those costs. And, and it would help us meet our objectives, and we think that the work that you all are doing is, is, you know, continuing your progress as a, as a quality authorizer.
Because I do remember it was CSP grant money that paid for public impact when they came in. And, and did the work. So, and I, and I appreciate the reminder.
Yep.
Of that as well. And, and I know you do have the obligation also to fulfill that. So, you know, if we can certainly help in that way. And we're good with that.
So Madam Chair, just to circle back on that last item, we'll put together a proposal. We'll just put it together for all these ideas. You can tell us what, what you think looks good.
That would be great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. So commissioners, now it's open for if commissioners have any other suggestions for how the 2% could be used. So that schools have equal access to it. You know, we have schools of varying sizes, so some schools are going to benefit, because it may cost more money for this school than this, this school. But it's, it's more the access for it and how we can help support schools. I think, I, I think building out that board training is important, you know, and what that looks like. But anyone else have a wish list?
I have one small thing that is very minimal money. It's not going to help very much in spending it down. But I was talking to Missy during the break about the boards in general. And one of the things I think could be really a great, like, especially if we're going to start really looking at increasing our touch points with governing boards. She, she made a recommendation that I think we should, we should take up, and that's to, which I know PCS and M already does this, but would to be presenting awards from the P E C to exemplary governing boards at the charter school conference. So I, I don't think that would cost, I mean, it doesn't cost very much. It's like a little plaque or a little, little trophy, nice little glass thing or whatever. But I think that would be such a good, like, not only does it show that we value exemplary boards and we're going to recognize them, but once again, it just like increases that the view of the relationship between P E C and governing boards, like, just really start to build on that. And, and maybe even doing like other, other awards as well, you know, like, but like, I, that would cost money to do it, even though it's not very mu, I mean, it's not going to spend down a bunch, but I think that's something that would be included in this.
Yeah, yeah. No, absolutely. Because I think we forgot for a while. We hadn't been sending schools. Let me send a school something. It was like after renewal that there was some kind of certificate that came that they had been renewed. And it got, I was unaware of it. And then someone reminded me, it's like, hey, I didn't get my, because it's just that simple gesture. I want to put this on the wall so when people walk into my office, they know that they got renewed and the contractors. And it's like, I don't even know what you're talking about. So then, so then we started doing it again because it, it got dropped somewhere. So a, a hundred, and I think the printing office here could probably even, but.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I want to spend money.
Yeah, and I.
Like, I would like to do something that, like, do something, not just a, a paper.
Yeah.
Like, something really nice that, like, they, they would go display, you know?
Right, yeah.
Platinum board, like, I was thinking, because she, like, if you, if there's like certain boards that are like recognized by C S D of like being these great boards that year, that we could recognize them as like platinum board, or, you know, something like that to where it's not like you're the best board, but just that, like, we're recognizing you're excelling at that.
And have students design it.
We have to do that starting yesterday in order to have it ready for June.
So I think we need at least three more TV sets in this room. You know, my neck is hurting now that I have to look this way and, and like, so I, I, I don't know if this is feasible. I'm sure I'm going to get some nose on this. I just think about some of the biggest pain points that our charter schools feel. If we're able to figure out ways, and I was talking to Ms. Chavez about this, like, is there any way for us to make this simplified for schools to receive some of the funding back, to do things like food services? Like, thinking about how do we, how do we invest in that since we know there's going to be some changes, especially for the 15, but all the schools could benefit from having access to additional funds to, to lift up their, their food service programming, especially for next year. Same thing with like, I don't, it won't go far at all for transportation or facilities, but, you know, things of schools. And I, and I think CSP funding also could be used for, you know, things that a lot of schools need in terms of upgrades to some of the things like desks and things like that, other things that would be really beneficial for schools to create a, an environment to live out their program. So it's not just to like buy things or supplies, but how is it in alignment to the mission and vision? So I, and again, I don't know, I'm Pollyannaish. I, I have all the will and intentions for this. I know that there's a lot of really difficult bureaucratic processes that we'd have to figure out. But I think the more that we're able to maybe center around, maybe these two ideas aren't the ones, but I think similar to our previous discussion when we want to hone in on like math, if we hone in on some of the, the real pinpoint, or, sorry, real pain points. And this is where you could fit in too, Matt, to help us out with that, like, what are the pain points that are most persistent? And they're going to be different for different schools based on where they are. But I wonder if we have a menu of options where it could be a significant impact on something like developing a stronger foods, food, you know, food program or things of that, that nature. So anyhow, that's my, that's how I would like to see that work. But again, I don't know, we'd have to work with PD to kind of figure out what, what's possible, what's not. I'm sure that there would have to be R F Rs involved in this process potentially, or R F Ps, whichever, whichever, whichever art needs to be in place. But that's where I would feel like between now and, you know, June 30th, if we do have a lump sum of funding that we could really impact children, like, directly around things that we know have been persistent with schools, I would love to see that.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, but I'm going to add also, the new board training legislation is requiring that boards record their board minutes and keep them for three years. And I think we do still have some.
I thought it was their meetings.
What did I say?
Minutes.
Oh, sorry. Their board meetings, sorry. And I think we have schools that are still challenged with some technology in being able to do that. So if there's something that we could do to, I think I'd put that into the pool as well so that we can make sure the schools are compliant. Does that go into effect July 1, that legislation? It does, yes. There wasn't, so I think some boards are going to be scrambling a little bit on how they, how they can accomplish this. And I don't think that's a big ticket item. I think food services might be a big ticket item, but, you know, I don't really care because it's kids that are, that don't have food. That's the bottom line. So if there's, if there's something that we can do, I mean, some of those challenges we have, we can't affect because it's a, it's just where they are, and there aren't a lot of options. But whatever barriers we can do to help overcome that, I, you know, I, I fully support that.
I did fail to mention that we, at the Food Service Subcommittee, we did create a, a survey. That's, at, at the end of it is like, we asked them very specifically for like what they need. So that went out Monday, Tuesday, God, yeah.
No, 36.
36. And, um. 36 responses and six are from the schools that currently do not serve any food. So we were hoping, like, we're going to meet next week. We already planned to meet next week, and we're, to hopefully look, and we'll have a proposal for the commission about what that could look like next month. And we're hoping it's big tickets, too. We're hoping we can tell you guys a bunch of places that need things for their food and.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
And we left it open for all, we did, we were specific in making sure every school had the opportunity to say that if they needed something, because we knew that there's the 12 schools that aren't a part of it. And we knew that was like the focus of starting the subcommittee, but this is how we like kind of tackled that it's accessible to every school. And so we asked them if they're part of the food. Are they serving food? How are you doing, you know, that kind of stuff? But everyone also was asked, do you need anything?
Okay. Anyone? Audit? Food services? Whatever we can partner with PCS and M with? And the technology for the boards?
And like any mission implementation? Like, I, which I, I wonder if you, you, another survey, maybe C S D could send out one that's specifically about like the technology? And do you, do you have anything that's mission specific that you need? Like, do you, do you have any materials that you would need to help you carry out your mission more effectively? And that way, every school, once again, has that option to be like, yes, like, I do have something. Because I think we're just starting to figure out the cost is going to be out, because we need to figure it out by next month.
Exactly.
Yeah. If we're, if we're over.
We were, we were. There was conversation about the possibility of, and I don't know what value, but we talked about, like, a grant writer. Or, you know, could we contract with someone or a company or whatever? Because I, I mean, so I'll give you the example. I was at an LCPS meeting with charter schools. And LCPS had missed a deadline for a grant that was, a fairly significant grant. And they said, wait, no, the grant was even, they were at a meeting, and they said, well, the deadline's today. And it's like, how did, how did we miss that? So, you know, to me, if an LCPS with all the staff is missing it, let's think about a little charter school that, you know, the head admin is, you know, everywhere. So where, where are schools, you know, missing those opportunities? And LCPS also said, and the challenge is if we find something late, we don't have a grant writer. So we can't get the work done because we don't have a grant writer to do this. And that's, and I know a school down by me did contract with a grant writer. And they finally, they, they didn't renew the contract because they said the money that was brought in from the grants that this particular grant writer was finding for them, it was less than what they were paying the grant writer for. So, and I don't know whether that was as much about the availability of the grants or the work product of the grant writer. But it wasn't worth their money, and I, and I certainly appreciate that. So is that something that really would help schools? Because that also helps to fill some big gaps and some small gaps with schools in mission fulfilling and other areas, you know, being able to get some equipment that they can't afford, but they got a grant that, or they can hire a teacher because they, they received this grant. So I don't have it completely thought out. It's exactly what it, it's, that's what I'm thinking about, but I don't know how it would be structured, you know? And, and would it be something that schools would make use of?
I think that's something to put in your survey, Madam Chair, because we know historically that our charter schools actually fare a bit better than school districts and many of the grant opportunities that are provided by the state, mostly because I, I think they have an easier time envisioning how it's going to be on a single campus and writing a compelling application. So historically, they, they've done quite well, but we also know of the, the limited administrative capacity, like you've noted. So, you know, I think for them, a lot of it's going to be in, it depends who it is and whether I can trust them to get the same grant that when I wrote it on a Saturday night, I got it, you know? But there's a world where it does, where that would make sense, but it's certainly ask them, because they may, that may be one, because it's like, it's on or off. You either got the money or you didn't. That might be one that they're less interested in letting go of because it's so high consequence. But I think that they would just, you just have to go directly to them to see how they feel about it. Thank you.
We are on to item number 10. Discussion of P E C policy regarding reports by C S D if concerns from P E D bureaus are received off cycle. So that's, now that we're looking at the annual reports and those letters are going out, there will likely be times when a concern will be raised outside of that annual report cycle, so it won't be noted in that letter. It's going to come after. So, and, and one of those areas, as an example, was from, was it last meeting they did, Sped did the presentation? So that was one of those examples. If through the annual determination letters, there's a significant concern raised, do we wait till the next annual report for that? Or what, what does the commission want to do about those? So that, it's really just for discussion. Is it? Are we going to? You know, there's a piece of me that doesn't want to engage in the intervention ladder immediately with a, a letter of concern, because you are then engaging the, the intervention ladder. And that raises it to, you know, like this level, and it may not be that level. But is it something that we want to take a look at and say, well, you know, they're simply going to, is there going to be a letter that goes to the school that indicates that there's a concern? And the school has an opportunity to either address it through paper, or if we feel it's still significant enough to have the school come up and have a conversation with the school about that concern. And then at that moment in time, if we're comfortable with the decision with what the school is doing, we can say, okay. Or if we're not comfortable with the response from the school, either in paper or in writing, we say, well, then we, we have to use it, make it a letter of concern because this isn't going well. So that's what we're opening the conversation for, what commissioners would like our policy and practices to be with that.
I, I think you can't wait until the next annual report if these things surface. And, and I, I really like your idea of sending a letter initially and allowing them to respond. You know, based on the, I mean, if, if it's a severe issue like a special letter, something like that, you know, that requires a lot more urgency in terms of what's going on. But I think we do have to create some type of a formalized policy that says we're not going to wait till the next annual report, that we will issue a letter to the school with expected fairly immediate follow-up in terms of the resolution.
What's the downside of, of acting right away? And is it that we have to get it on the agenda for, and it's two months by the time we can actually talk about it? Can we put it, is, are these things that we could put on immediately on an agenda? Like, if it's in the middle of a month between our meetings and something comes up that really needs to be responded to? I'm just wondering what the downside is.
About the timing, because it depends on when in the month it is, because schools are supposed to be given, well, I think we're looking at 10 days notice if they're going to be on the agenda. So if the concern was raised inside of that 10 days, then, no, we can't. No, I don't, I don't think we did this. What world are you living in? I, I heard seven, it wasn't a decision that it was going to be seven, because that's not something we can change as the executive committee. That's something the whole commission has to. And I thought the discussion was more about the, um, the annual reports and the 45 days, because that throws the cycle off. Right, I mean. The intervention ladder has 10 days, does it not? The intervention ladder does have 10 days. Um, you know, seven days. We can talk about it. Because you're including weekends in there, so there's, it's, you know, that's a short turnaround. And I, I get, you know, there's a problem and now we have to wait a whole month. Um, honestly, in, in my mind, if it's a significant problem, we call a special meeting and we have a special meeting about that problem. You know, that's certainly within our purview to do that. If there was something that was like, oh my God, we have to do so. I mean, we could even call an emergency meeting if it was, if there was a health and safety concern at the school, which is, when I use the example of the school that we closed, we called an emergency meeting because we found out something that that school should not open. And that school was going to open in a, in less than a week. And we called an emergency meeting and we closed that school, I think the next day, before, before they could open for that school year. They had already operated for one year. But, but, so we have, it's not supposed to just be used all the time. There has to be very specific reasons for, but if it's, if it's that significant, there are mechanisms for us to be able to use. So to me, these concerns are not concerns that raise to that level. Commissioner Correa?
I agree with Tim in terms of letter going out, uh, almost immediately after something is raised. Yeah, recognition of that challenge or problem, whatever, and letting them know they need to respond within a certain amount of time, because they're on our radar. This isn't good.
That's a letter from the chair without, without discussing it with the whole group.
No, we would still discuss it, like, let's say tomorrow, there's something that rises to the level of, holy smokes! We can decide tomorrow that a letter needs to go out the following week, alerting the school as to that they're on our radar regarding this issue. What are they going to do about it?
We can't talk about it, it's, it's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it.
Sorry, the school would have to be notified that, because the chair doesn't have that authority to just send out a letter and say, hey, you know, that here's a concern. It has to be the commission is making that decision. Um, so there still would have to be the notification to the school that they were, that they were on the agenda for a potential letter, however we're going to word that letter. Um, I hesitate to use the letter of concern, because the letter of concern is in the intervention ladder. So it would have to be, you know, headed something, yes.
Number nine.
Well, I, I think, I think a couple of things. One is the concern will have come from a PED bureau. So the chair could send a letter identifying the PED bureau concern. So I think we can have it be one step down from the intervention ladder potentially. You always have the intervention ladder available, you can follow it any day you want to. Um, in terms of, um, where I think, uh, the, the timelines are for putting things are on, intervention ladder says 10 days, there's a, that would need to be changed in rule. The, um, rule also directs the timeline for schools being notified about their annual report. So that's already taken care of. I think it is internal EC policy about 10 days or seven days if a school is being put on for a different reason. So I think the, for the agenda, well, the agenda has, has 72 hours, but, um, we've been doing it the Friday before, so that would be seven days.
But let's let schools know before, so that's the question.
Yeah, but I, and all I'm saying is, I don't think that's anywhere except EC policy, which the EC can discuss that 10 to seven days. The intervention ladder clearly says 10, so.
So Julia, uh, and, uh, Sher Gibson, you're looking at item nine for tomorrow. We have all these schools listed, possible action to accept or not the annual report. Wouldn't, let's just say one of these schools, um, rises to the level of, it really catches our attention that something's amiss. And, um, couldn't we then just say, you know, as a body, yes, I think this is a school we want to send a letter to regarding this challenge that they're facing.
Well, we don't let her.
Sending a letter with the annual reports of unsatisfactory, that they're exemplary satisfactory. So we are sending a letter and highlighting those concerns that came out of, directly out of the annual report. They're already getting that letter. We're talking about off that cycle, there's a concern that's raised, you know, I, you know, PED bureau notifies, uh, someone, you know, sped bureau notifies Karina that, you know, a school is way out of compliance with, with something. And it's, it's June. So what do we do, because we're not sending that letter with the annual report? This is step, this is a different time of the year. So this is, so what are we doing about those concerns that are raised outside of the annual report cycle?
So.
Finish, hold on a second, finish my thought. It's like, I would want to send something with them as soon as possible, even if it's off-cycle.
Okay, so we have precedence right now with last year's fiscal audit. And any day now, the fiscal audit is going to drop. Okay, so let's just say that it drops in time for us to do an analysis of the results and present those to you at the March meeting. I think now Commissioner Ingham's question comes into play. And that is, would you do something in March? Or would you have to wait till April? If there is a concern, and last year you put some schools on a financial corrective action plan? Or maybe you just do letters to schools after the audit comes out that says, we're very concerned about the results?
I would say whatever demonstrates more urgency.
I, I have, so I don't think we give letters. I think the only reason we talk to a school in any way, shape or form before their annual report is if we think that they might need to get on to the, like, that they might be leading to the, to a gap. That's what my perspective is. If it's an issue that should go on to the intervention ladder, then we do it then. Like if it's an audit finding, it's serious, it needs addressed, like it's so serious that it's not like something, we would just wait till the annual report and send them the letter saying, hey, fix it. Like, I mean, but for me, it's pretty, like, they are the extremes. Special Ed's the only one that I think is like, to me, a little bit more clear. If they are on a special ed cap, I think they go on the intervention ladder for us. And I think that's the one where I, that I see, like, that's off-cycle. If they, if, if special ed has something to where they're on a cap with that division, they should also be on our radar as well. That's the only one that's like super clear. Otherwise, I think like if Language and Culture says that their English learners aren't, you know, they, they send something to Karina and they're like, hey, we noticed when we went to the school, something's going on with their English learners. If Language and Culture and Karina are like, okay, but they, we think they're going to get it back on track right away, let PED do their thing. But if they're like, we think this is serious, this is where I still, I'm going to default to that the director provides input to the EC that this is a serious issue that I'm recommending. You guys start the process of going on to the intervention ladder. Otherwise, I don't think we send out stuff in, in between. Even if it's serious, they're gonna, and they're gonna get a red on their annual report. I think we use the annual reports as their device. Like, we have a process for uncorrected, un, like, that, that's the process. I don't think we skip that unless it's super serious. Like, I think the annual reports are number one, that's it. Unless there's something so egregious that the director recommends that they go on to the intervention ladder. The only thing I can think of that's like, su, that, and that, other than a sped cap, that, that I think there's a lot of discretion in that, what that looks like inside PED and with Director Chavez. Like what, what that ends, till it ends up coming to us. I think the only time we send out information is if we think that they're going to end up getting a, like, they're going to get a letter of concern and end up on a cap, kind of thing, like, that's it. Otherwise, don't.
Which, and you know, when we talked about, when we talked about the implementation of the intervention ladder, we did talk about the fact that, you know, the letter of concern is not casual, but it's, it's on a lower level. And hopefully, the school will clear it out and there won't be a problem. And then, you know, they get that letter. So maybe it is clearer to just keep that process.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what Commissioner Burt said, and I do think that, um, so this is where her working at PED really shines through. And so thank you, um, Becca. But like, if it's a special ed annual determination letter that is, and they come in different stages, right? Needs, needs assistance, year one, needs assistance, year two, needs intervention, year one. Okay, let's say there needs intervention year two, and I bring that to you. There is no way that that school is going to clean it up quickly, right? Because that's an annual report. They should have red on their annual report, but they also aren't going to get another letter from sped for another year.
But that does, yeah.
Then that should show up on their annual report to us.
Right.
And then we can send out a letter of unsatisfactory performance on special ed, because you're in that designation that last year, right? Like, that's where I think those, that's, yes, that, that's an annual report item. But when they go on to a cap in special ed, that's a whole different. So we're, are.
The caps are need technical assistance, year one, needs technical assistance, year two, needs intervention, year one, needs.
But don't they go on caps for things other than the annual determination letter?
Okay, so I sent.
There can be moments in time where special ed bureau finds that the schools, you know, a couple hundred hours out of servicing, so that they would then create that cap with them. Or they've done their IEP review, well, maybe not that, right?
Uh, individual student and family have an issue with the school that requires a cap.
Right.
Um, I think that should come to, like, if it requires a cap for that, we should have a letter of concern that goes out. And if they don't clear that cap with special ed, then that's where it comes. But, yeah, I, I don't think, I still think it's not based off the annual determination.
Right.
It's like those individual circumstances that come up.
That's a state complaint cap. So those are sort of off-cycle from the annual determination letters.
Right. And there, there, there have been times when the special ed bureau has come and expressed a concern based on something that, you know, they had a family interaction or they were at the school and this was not, you know, going well, that they came to us and expressed that concern. It was outside of the determination letter and that's, we've, we did at times take action. Or the school at that moment said, you know, we were able to clear it up. So I think it just stays clearer that we just keep with the intervention ladder and follow that process. And, um.
I think special ed just need, every bureau really should know in ped, that if you have a school with a serious issue, they need to talk to Director Chavez. Which I know, like, that's always been something that's like ebbs and flows sometimes.
Right.
Throughout the years, like, for, for a long time, like, it's like ebbs and flows with exactly how often they'll come to the director for that kind of stuff. But as long as they know that they can go to her, they, she can talk with them. And if they bring it to her and they're like, this is actually really serious, I would trust that the director would then be like, they said it's serious, so you guys need to know it's serious.
So that happens, maybe not consistently across every single bureau or division at the PED, but the other day I got notification from Indian Ed about some schools, some charter schools that had not submitted a tester. So I saw the email that the schools got, I reached out to the schools, one of them had it in by the end of the day. Um, and I need to check on the status of the others, but that does happen. And we, and we do take notation and it could be included in the performance framework rating about submitting documentation on time, blah, blah, blah.
We don't need to know that in real time.
Right, right.
Only when all of that has taken place and it's still not working, that's when it comes to us. But yes, we appreciate all that time and effort that's gone in to make sure the schools don't get to the point where they're sitting in front of us. That's what we're trying to do, that it's only coming to us because all else has failed. And the school is still ser, has a serious problem about this item. Or it could be that, you know, apparent concern was raised to a commissioner and it was, it raised a lot of health issues, something like that. And there was a PED or whoever did a investigation and corroborated that that was the fact. So that comes then to us, because it's, you know, it's, it's, they should really only be serious concerns that should not wait until being addressed at the annual report. Plain and simple. Okay, so I think we're good. Sure.
Um, just so I'm clear on what happens sequentially. So tomorrow, let's just say, one of these schools, and we get their annual reports, we scroll through all of them, boom, 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 right? So if one of the schools, it's indicated that they're, I mean, there's just so much red on that darn annual report. Is there anything we do immediately?
Yeah, we send, the letter's going to go out immediately after our meeting.
Okay, so they are.
Something, but there is, there is in the rule, in the way the annual reports come out, if there's something in the annual report that is to the level of, like, actually, like, like, no one else thought it was a big deal, but somehow the commission were like, actually, we think this is a really big deal. We're like, we're sick and tired of this, and like, we need to actually do something about it. We can, we would then go to the intervention ladder process. So it would be separate from the, you would still send the letter for the annual report, but then you would start the intervention ladder process, give them the notice that they're going to be on the next agenda. They come to the next agenda, they have the conversation, then you give the, the letter of concern and.
But just like last month, Alan sent out the letters right after the meeting to the five schools that we did, because we, we identified and, and if you, and the motions identify most of the, the red flags that are there.
The notices from the PEC, and, and it's written in rule what they would be, either excellence or unsatisfactory performance, next year repeated or uncorrected.
There's, there's two exact options for you. One of your options that Karina was just talking about is notice of intent to start the intervention ladder. That's one of them. So you can say.
Can be sent out right after tomorrow's meeting.
Tomorrow.
Should we do, great, that's all you need to know. I just always hate the idea of so much time lapsing before we do anything.
Because it's, it's about the, it's about the annual report, the schools have been notified. Because it's, it's about the inter- it's about the annual report. The schools have been notified that they're on the agenda for the annual report.
Send out the letter of concern that day.
Right, right.
You tell them next month where-
Right.
Likely to give you a letter of concern next month. So, it's, but it's not, you have to wait till the next one, then the next, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, we're good, are we good with this? Okay, all right. Um, uh, item number 11, which is discussion of the role of the PEC liaison position. And, um, I think I mentioned last month that I asked Karina to put this on because there are many commissioners who are on that really haven't had a liaison. That role has not been filled. So, um, Karina uploaded the job description, and, um, I thought it would be beneficial to have a brief discussion as to what this person actually does and how they interact with, um, with the commission so that, you know, commissioners don't undertake the thought that, you know, they're their personal assistant. You know, and so that it's, it's clearer as to what this is. Cause like I said, um, the position hasn't been really actively built in that manner in quite a while. Yeah, yeah, it is. Item number 11.
So, I think that the announcement, um, is rather, um, bare bones, if you will, but it does provide the link to, um, it does talk about the position number so that if you wanted to go into SPO and take a look at it, um, and the specific responsibilities for the position are, of course, to help facilitate your meetings, um, to set up and prepare for your meetings and all of the, um, meeting announcements and, um, all the things associated with that, as well as to process your travel. Um, and there was some questions that come up whenever you, whenever you, um, do an application. There's questions that get, that the applicants have to answer, and so, um, we talked about that as well.
So, and my understanding that the role has expanded a little bit with the reimbursements, because it used to be, as an example, when Bev was liaison, Bev did the preliminary paperwork for our reimbursements. But then Debbie Dolbaugh was here, and she did the final parts of it. And honestly, I- Alan has seen those pieces. I really haven't. So, but I know that it's, it's kind of like a two-part process. So, Bev used to do the first part, and Bev Friedman had been our liaison, but she also, and she's still here, because she does all the IPRA requests for PED. So, she was not full-time liaison for us. So, she did our reimbursements, and then Debbie, I guess, kind of completed them. She finalized the process. This person's responsibility is going to be, because I know I see in DocuSign the two separate kinds of forms. The one that I fill out, there's the preliminary one, and then there's that larger form that has a lot more in it than certainly what I put in it. So, um, and that's what Debbie used to do, that second form. This person is, their responsibility is to do the reimbursements from beginning to end. Correct?
Correct.
So, and that does take significantly more time than the time that Bev had to do just to get ours going to the appropriate offices.
And Bev was only part-time, right?
Correct.
So, so, and, and, yeah, and she was the biz- she was Jessica.
Well, I didn't, I didn't realize Debbie, who was Debbie shared with?
She shared with Ass- Assessment.
Oh, I didn't, you know, I never knew that.
Not whenever I got here.
Oh, yeah, but what, but during the time that she was talking about, that's, yeah.
Really?
That was also like a clunky situation where-
Yeah, I never knew that.
Both, both team members were in two different teams.
Right.
That got clarified, it sounds like, when you were here, but, uh, that was not-
It was the only biz ops when I got here.
Okay.
So, am I understanding correctly that the person, the liaison position um, is going to re- be responsible for all the steps in terms of processing our reimbursements?
No, I don't, not all the steps. Uh, well, okay. You still need to initiate your reimburse-
We go over to DocuSign, we fill out everything. Something comes back to us, we re-sign it, then it's sent back.
Right, but this doesn't take away what ASD has to do in the fact that it needs to go to DFA and everybody else to, um, be vouched for before you get reimbursed. I think what Patty's just talking about is that when Bev was your liaison, she didn't, she didn't go into DocuSign to get your, your travel going and creating the, um, okay, she didn't create the envelopes, is what she didn't do. And this person will. This person will function in the way that Jessica and Samantha have been functioning, um, and that to tr- to process your travel in the way that Sharon did for a short while. When Sharon first started, she didn't get your travel right away, cause she was easing into the position, and then she did. Um, and so, we're gonna start out with someone who can start strong in that regard because I think that that's what you guys need. I think that that's a huge need, and, you know, we all participate in helping getting your meetings organized, and we want this person to really own that as well. But there's a lot of other support for that. Um, so those are the two main things that that person will do.
Okay, give it, I'm not, so given the, her other responsibilities, as they may exist within, you know, the department. First, I just wanna say that first and foremost, she's gonna be processing us, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's gonna be making sure your meetings go smoothly, he or she.
Processing our travel reimburse- Nothing that I put in in September hasn't been followed through on in December.
That's right.
Right, that's what I need to hear. Thank you very much.
And she, she will be that person that if there is, you know, oh, where is my, or what happened to?
All right.
She's, she's the person that'll be able to track that and say, this is where it's, it's sitting. So, that's, hopefully, um, hopefully that can happen quicker. So, when is, um-
So, so at, um, so I can pull applications, cause it's been posted, right? And then, um, we can hold interviews, and I've already invited, um, Commissioner Gibson to be a member of the interview committee.
I'm available.
And I, and, and we appreciate your flexibility with that. So, um, I think early next week, after we can talk about scheduling sometime to, to, I, I have to get an okay from HR. Here, you know, I get the list, and then I say, here, HR, these are the ones I wanna interview, and they say, okay, you're free to do that. And then there's a bunch of paperwork, and then we hold the interviews, and then there's a bunch more paperwork. Um, so-
Person comes on in summer.
Excuse me?
The person comes on in summer.
When are you expecting this person to hopefully be able to start?
Well, as soon, as soon after we, um, as soon as we have the interviews, then I would say we have to look at the pay period, and it has to be like at least two weeks.
Well, that's, two weeks is good. I mean,
Yeah.
I can remember the conversations, especially with Alan, where it's like, we had this great candidate, but then by the time everything fell into place, it's like, yeah, that person found another job because it was like six months. I think he met someone in a coffee shop one time. It's like, you still interested in that job? You know?
Are you trying to trigger me right now, like, uh?
But I just don't, I just don't wanna, you know, I know how this place operates often. So, that's where it, you know, tha- that's where the challenge often is, is there's a delay in in being able to get that person on board, and they get, they find a, a better job. So, okay. So, the sooner, so maybe even hopefully by the next meeting, they'd be on. Okay, okay, all right. And, yeah, yeah, yeah. There is a recording of this.
Is Cindy writing this down right now?
Okay. So, tech, yep, so now we are on to, um, n- n- number 12, discussion of technical changes to the PEC rule, which, and- Yes, yeah, so, we wanted-
Yeah, we wanted to put this on the agenda to just start the conversation. We're starting to Monday morning quarterback the PEC rule, and, and they really are technical changes. So, one of them, for example, um, that CSD is really coming up against is sending out annual reports 45 days before our meeting. Probably 30 days is better. Um, the other is the 10 days on the intervention ladder when the agenda goes out, seven. I don't know if you wanna do that or not, but m- m- most of these changes are kind of timing changes. Um, I, and the other one I was just thinking of is, is, and I keep thinking about it, is the clunkiness of that intervention ladder. And maybe we move a notice of concern to a little bit easier process than the rest of it or something. Um, cause my reaction to your last conversation is that intervention ladder is so clunky.
I hate to interrupt you, but I'm missing item 12. It used to-
There is no-
I did see one.
Oh, really? I-
Like, a couple days ago, I did see something about the rule and where, there was a document?
No, I know, in the, no, there wasn't, there wasn't a document.
No, I never, I never saw anything for 12.
I mean, we more just wanted to start to raise, did you guys even wanna touch the rule? Um, did, a, a part of me doesn't wanna touch the rule, so I, but I wanted to, we wanted to let you know that there are some things that are, well, I, I'm a pretty good advocate of this rule. I actually think that it, it has so many things I'm so happy about. But I think that, that the EC and, uh, and some of us just wanted to kind of say, do we even wanna touch some of it? Because some of it's hard.
I'm gonna say absolutely not, because I think we need to sit with it for like at least a year through a whole cycle, because if we're gonna, it is not easy to change this. It's going to be a lot. So, I don't wanna open it now, and then six months, you guys say something else is weird. I, like, I, no, I'm absolutely, totally against it. Like, we just barely passed it, we're just doing it. Let it fig- like, figure it out, go through the pain points of this, this cycle for a full year, figure out all the pain points, and then I'll consider thinking about it. But I've, there's no world in which I wanna touch opening up this rule right now.
Let me guess, you disagree. Commissioner Korea?
How about a world in which there's something that, uh, there might be a little world in any way. So, the reason we brought this up, it was the 30 versus 45 days, because we are so encumbered. But I don't know why we chose 45, and this was for which particular procedure, Julia?
The annual reports. It's been very difficult. I don't think CSD's been making it.
And it's just like, it's really a hindrance. Um-
Listen, we can re- we can do them next, like, do the annual reports next month instead of this one. Like, that's not, if, if it's 15 days is, is making it to where everyone's like pulling their hair out, don't do the next set of annual reports in March, do them in April, like, for this cycle. But I, like, to just open the rule back up immediately for one little thing, like, it just doesn't, I ca- I, like, I understand, I get it. But opening up the rule is-
We're, we've been busting, um, exclamation point to, um, to be ready for March. You will get batch three in March.
And what I'm gonna say is, I, I agree with the concept of changing it to 45, to 30, from the 45. But we're through this cycle, so the rule change doesn't, there's no reason to open the rule up now because we're com- we've completed these schools. We've got this batch of 20, the others will be done. So, it's no longer, that, that timing is no longer a concern. So, I more agree that, um, we need to, we need to see what everything looks like to open it up, because it, it, it is a lot.
But isn't the whole timeline of opening the rule and changing something like about 90 days? Well, more, so that's why we'd wanna open it now for discussion and look at what we wanna do so it's ready for the beginning of next year.
If it was just us and we could do this in-house, I'd consider it. But we're relying on the PED policy group, and I'm not doing-
That's why the 90 to 120 days. But isn't that what in and of itself-
But also, there were contentious parts to it that I, like, this is where, once again, when we talked about opening the Charter School Act, and then legislators can go through and do what they want, I'm not in a space where I feel super comfortable collaborating at this point on this after what happened to get it here. I'm not, like, I don't wanna reengage in that. Over, over 30 to 45 days, you're opening up the whole thing, and then their policy group goes and writes all over it. I'm, I just-
I mean, what you say is, we can't pinpoint the one thing. Once you open up the rule, they can just come in and muck up everything. Okay.
They could suggest it, yeah. Oh, yeah. They could, so tha- so then you're, you're bargaining away things because they're gonna make suggestions that they're now gonna hold on to. So, it does make it difficult. I agree that it needs, um, that it needs a review. I, I do. Not now, if, yes, we have to. To me, if we're going to open it up, we better be opening it up for everything that we can see that we need, um, some look at, not just because, you're right, it's the 45 days this time. Then we chip away and we lose something from them, and then we see another issue, and now we have to chip away at it again, and we lose another thing because we've opened it up again. And it also, I think for the charter schools, it's like, oh, my God. You know, they said they were creating this rule because they wanted to stabilize things, and they weren't gonna be changing. And now they're changing the rule every 90 days. So, it's, you know, I fully, I don't know why we got, I don't know why the 45 is there. I can't even tell you. Tell me it was my suggestion. So, but, but it's, um, it's there, and it's unfortunate. And I, and there was really, there was only really one particular bristly piece that the 45 days became the, the-
Well, and I mean, to me, this also is just gonna show the additional kudos we need to give to Director Chavez, Director Russell, like, and the CSD team for doing it in that timeframe, knowing that it's challenging, and still getting it, like, going through the process and getting it in batches early in the year. Incredible, especially knowing it's challenging.
Yeah, I mean, this is, um, balancing doing last year's work with also doing this year's work at the same time. Trying to get those annual reports out while CSD staff is out on site visits. Doing, you know, having a mindset of looking at last year's reports, and then getting into the mindset of looking at what, what this is. And there are, you know, changes that have taken place, so it's, you know, it's profoundly difficult. And, um, that's why I even said, you know, we've got the money if it's staff that's the, because I, I get all the work. And if it means we need more people, then, you know, we, we have the, we have the money. It's not a PED budget issue because it doesn't, it's not PED's money that we're using, and we wanna be able to support this. Hopefully, we're not gonna be in this place next year, but because we are juggling all of this, and, you know, look at all the renewals next year, so there's gonna be re- year, so there's going to be renewal site visits and all of that going on while these annual, while the annual reports are going to be done. So I really am asking, you know, let's think about this and think about, do we have to ask for more staff there? Because there's a lot of schools up for renewal. That's a lot of work compressed into the fall of next year. With these annual reports rolling out in the fall, and all of, all of the renewal, that's, it's a lot. And my personal preference is that it's permanent staff that's doing the work, because they have a better feel for what they're doing, as opposed to having to just have a contractor come in to help with, you know, a site visit or something, because they, they don't have the cadence that permanent staff has. And it's a whole different lens when you haven't been part of that team and so on. I think it's really important that, you know, there, there's that consistency. Okay, so, um, item number 13 is, we wanted to, we wanted to put this on the agenda, and I did ask Corina, and she did put in 13B. There is the chart that simply shows who's out. I didn't think I had to go more than 120 days, I don't think I did. But I asked, I'm not, no, I don't think so, I'm not even sure anymore.
We did, so can I just?
Yep.
Talk about this? Okay, so, so this chart actually talks about how many days from when you traveled, right? So there's a lot of things going on here that we can't really tell why it's this long. In some commissioners' cases, they didn't initiate the docu-sign, so it got backed up. And I think one of the ways to, to look at this is next to the other document that was uploaded with the same number, which.
But that document doesn't help with why stuff is late.
So, so the one that, the one that, I, can I share screen? Let me just share screen.
No, we've got it. Are you talking about A, the sample?
Yes, okay, so there's two documents, right? There's this one, which you can see beautifully. Not.
I was trying to make these anonymous. I was trying to make these as anonymous as possible.
Okay, no, 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 I'm not telling you how the letters correspond at all, but I'm showing you the tracker, which basically, the chart starts counting right here, when did the travel occur. But there's lots of steps, right? Like, the commissioner initiates the, the reimbursement, and then an envelope is created, and then it goes to a voucher. I don't know why this is, there we go. So the envelope is created, it goes to accounts payable, and then it's vouched, and then it has to, once it's vouched, it has to go to DFA before you're reimbursed. So I'm just wanting you all to know that when we take a look at the document that shows how many are 30, 60, 90, 120, or whatever, that it's, that it is not telling you where it is or why it's that far delayed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So.
So, so this document that has, like, how many, Commissioner A, or let's go with Commissioner D, no, F has a lot. F has something that's 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, and 120 days. Those are all days since that commissioner traveled. But if we look at the 120 days, there's all kinds of stories behind why there are six that are 120 days, right? No, there's, there's more than one story, and, and Commissioner, Chair Gibson, remember, we talked about, one of the things we are going to talk about with this item is that commissioner, the expectation that commissioners complete the docu-sign, like, right after the travel. And there's some that do it the day after, like Chair Gibson, like, the day after, she's got it in there. And there's others that don't. And that is part of, that's part of the story.
That's part of the story. But for the commissioners that got it in, in a timely fashion, and still haven't been reimbursed, there's, you know, and I think that's, I think that's more, especially when you're looking at those, you know, and so, you know, I am wholeheartedly in support of, you know, I've always been more in support of, I think there comes a point in time if a commissioner hasn't, there's a cutoff time. I don't say it's four days or five days, but I do think there's a cutoff time where if you're waiting, because I know at previous times, we had a commissioner that wanted one big check at the end of the year. So they didn't do any of their reimbursements until the end of the year. It's like, you can't do that. And I firmly am in support, but I know we can't do it, of saying, you know what? If you didn't, if you didn't submit within 60 days, too bad on you, you're too late, you're not going to get reimbursed. I know we can't do that, but commissioners need to know that it has to be done timely, and it's only fair to the folks, because if you hand it in late, that means we're handing in the next month, and some commissioners are handing in last month plus this month. So you're doubling the work of the liaison, because now they're, you know, they should have been finished with your reimbursements from last month, but now they're not, because you were late in submitting it, and now they're already on the next month, and they have to backtrack. And that's not, that's not fair. And DFA has said, if it comes in late, it's going to the bottom of the pile.
So, so I, I shared this document with people in ASD, and I said, this is not okay. I know that there's at least one commissioner that is owed $3,000 or $4,000. This is not okay. You guys told us that you would prioritize PEC travel reimbursement, and I went down last week and I talked to the folks that processed that. They said they would do it, and still this is what it looks like, and I'm having a meeting with PEC, so I.
Little Girl Scout mint cookie.
I, I was told.
Last weekend, you know, they, it wasn't, it wasn't significant. And the paperwork came later, after I was gone. So I don't know exactly what it was, but it was, let's just throw her something, so that she's not really mad. But, you know, so I don't.
Let's just take it out of her paycheck. Whatever's owed to us comes out of the paychecks of the people that downstairs that are not doing it. And if somebody's owed three grand, well, that's three grands off their two-week pay that they're not going to get.
I do think it would be fair, though, Corina, instead of it, this chart that you have that's based off of when the commissioner traveled, I think it would be more fair to do it based off of when the commissioner submitted.
Submitted.
And, and don't give the benefit of, you know what I mean? Like, don't put 120 days if the commissioner put it in 30 days late. Like, if, if someone submitted late, it should be 60 days late, not 90 days. Like, so i- if you could update this chart with, based off of when the commissioner submitted, I think that makes more, it's more fair.
Commissioner Burt, did you look at 13A? Because what this is, is our tracker, which does say specifically.
I saw that, yeah.
When the, the reimbursement gets started and, and the envelope, et cetera. And what I wanted to offer was that if any commissioner wants to know what their current status was, that they could request this. We've already done it with a couple people, this one's redacted, don't ask me whose it is. And, but you could at any time request to find out where things are. And, and what I asked Jessica and Samantha to start doing is, if you look at column, oh, gosh, the column's not showing up, but the voucher number column, which talks about whether it's in the system or not, they have to go into share to see if it's been vouched. And I said, just so that we always know what's up today, put the date on there as of 2/24. So that's when this was last checked within the system, and, yeah, so.
And just, when Corina and I spoke, she had a link that was possible for commissioners to click on to, but we would see everyone's by name. And I didn't know what, I did, I wasn't comfortable with that, and I certainly didn't want that link in our records, but I, I was just going to put it out there.
It's like oddly, it's not really, it's public.
I know.
It's like oddly.
Me too, me too. And I just didn't want that, but I guess I could say, if, then if someone wants it, then they're looking at mine, and I don't know whether I want them looking at mine. I just don't think it's necessary to see it. I think if we have the opportunity to ask for our chart and say, could you just give it to me? As long as, as long as someone's not calling every week.
Want your chart?
And saying, I want that chart, I want that chart. You know, that you, you ask, and then there's reasonable amount of time.
Like mine also.
That goes by.
That all of these should? No, that, I'm sorry, that all of these should?
Oh. It's 120 days late. DFA has said that. Because.
I don't know about that 120-day rule with DFA.
I just put, when Felicia did the presentation to us when we were in the Oso.
Yeah.
Felicia said that DFA communicated to her in the training that, you know, there was that, it had, we had to hand it in within two days or three days. It had to be processed through. And DFA told her at the training that if it, anything that goes outside of that cycle goes to the bottom of the pile.
Okay, so if.
So that's all I.
If ASD tells us, okay, we, we created the voucher and, and DFA has put it to the bottom of the pile, it's not moving, it's not moving, it's not moving, then what I will do, because I am advocating for you guys to get reimbursed all the time, but what I'll do is, I'll ask Mary Ann if she'll join me in a call with DFA to have a conversation with them, because I absolutely don't think you all as volunteers should be waiting, that it should go to the bottom of the pile. I don't. And I will do anything that I can to advocate for that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we just keep this as a agenda item just until, you know, yep, okay.
Get the chart to where it doesn't make us look like, or like, if it's on us, then it's on us.
Yes.
Like, don't give them, don't make it look bad for them if it's on a commissioner that we submitted late.
Yes, things that.
Okay.
Defense of myself, okay? Because I'm the guilty party, I think. I tried to turn them in, and somehow the envelopes or whatever it is with, with docu-sign failed miserably. And I got confused, and the fact of the matter is, nobody's gotten me up to speed where I can actually submit myself. So I.
On, on the app? In the docu-sign, or on with paper?
With docu-sign. Okay, so it's my, my bad, but I try every time to communicate, because they're doing it for me. I come and bring all the information, try to get it. It has been a struggle all the way through. I tried, I, I know I don't get as late as you're talking about 60 days, there's no way. But what I'm going to say is, we've had, I had a struggle trying to connect personally with somebody here in Santa Fe and go through the stuff and get it all done. Dave's had a struggle, some of my stuff got lost. What can I say? Okay, the reality is, I may be a guilty party here, but it hasn't been from lack of evidence. That's what I'm going to say. So I'm not concerned so much about being late. I don't want to hold everybody else up, but concerns me.
But you're not holding anyone up.
Well, that's what, what you said is, that if somebody's late, then that's going to push everybody up.
No, 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 no. No, I didn't say that.
It's not that much money, I'm okay, I'm not out like you. All I want to make sure is that I'm not causing other people.
No one, no one.
This isn't late, because.
Me and Copa, I did it.
No, 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 and I don't think I said that, because, no, no, just because everyone hasn't turned in January's reimbursement, that doesn't hold everyone up until everyone has filled it out. So no individual commissioner has any effect on any other commissioners. No, you don't, you don't.
It's up to me, I get, I think.
But it does get communicated back when there's concerns raised about where is reimbursement. There's going to be an automatic response, well, you know, you have some commissioners that are out, that hand their stuff in late. So that does, but it does not affect any of us in any way that, that, it only affects you. The only lateness, lateness only affects the individual that's turned them in late. So, but if there's something that we can help with to get you. Okay, all right. Okay. So now we're on to subcommittee updates, performance framework. Well, we covered it with the, with the modifications that we had to make to the footnotes. And that's the only, only thing that we need for that. Budget has not met, because I think we all ignored the email. I, well, I didn't see it until it was after Corina sent the thing out, is anyone going to respond or something? It's like, that's when I saw it, so I missed it. So mea culpa on all of us, and we'll get together as the budget subcommittee. Okay. Okay, we will look at that. Policy has not met since the last meeting, when you worked on the NOI. Lottery has not met. Food service has met, Becca mentioned what the food service was going to do.
We asked her to ask for the food and nutrition folks to come talk to us. Yeah, the happiness, but the people doing it at PED, just so we can get more clarification about what their rollout is, what their requirements are, so we know better, just for ourselves, because we're still like, a little confused how it's all working from the PED side. So, yeah, that's our next, we'll review the survey results, and then we're going to talk, be talking to them, yeah.
Okay, RFP for authorizer software?
You want me to talk on that? I can.
Oh, that's right.
You just have a meeting coming up, right? You.
Yeah, I can just say we have a meeting coming up next week, Tuesday.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, reports from liaisons, LESC, LFC, don't meet during session, so we're good to go on that. Indian Education Advisory? I don't think they've met, have you met? Okay, okay. Cap, you're right, you're, you're not meeting. NIPSY doesn't meet, correct? Because the session NIPSY hasn't met, correct?
We did meet, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we met last week, and I attended virtually. Nothing significant to report.
School Boards Association?
No, we, Joe and I, when we talked, we just said this is the December, that's the big one, but we're going to do our presentation.
Okay. Library Commission.
Oh, the Library Commission met?
Oh, the Library Commission met? And I was unable to attend the meeting? So I continue to be an exemplary example of what it is to be a liaison.
Coalition of Education Leadership?
Thank you very much.
Becca, you didn't meet?
Yes.
Yeah, you are. New Mexico Coalition of Education Leaders, Commissioner, oh, I said Becca, he looked your way, so I thought maybe I read it wrong.
No, I'm still looking for Stan Rounds.
Oh, yeah. Across the street.
Well, he's gone now. No, he's not.
You can come to, go to any LESC meeting, and you'll be there. Yeah.